Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting and return of service?
Plymouth SS, greetings to either of the constables of the town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Duxbury qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street in said Duxbury on Thursday, the sixth day of September 2018, next at 7:00 PM for a special town meeting for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, and by publishing a copy of this warrant in a Plymouth County newspaper as prescribed by Article 2, Section 2.3 of the Duxbury Bylaws at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands this 13th day of August 2018. Board of Selectmen, Theodore J. Flynn Chair, Sean Dallin Vice Chair, David J. Madigan Clerk. Plymouth SS, August 15, 2018. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Duxbury herein described to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as prescribed by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Alden E. Requist, Constable of Duxbury.
Unless there's some objection, we will dispense with the reading of the warrant. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the honor guards of the Duxbury Police and Fire Departments. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me introduce the people you see facing you in the front of the room. They are on your right, the Honorable Ted Flynn Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Honorable Sean Dallin Vice Chair, the Honorable David Madigan Clerk. All members of the board are seated with them, and the other members seated with them are our Town Manager Rainey Reed and our Director of Finance John Adams. Here on the platform with me is our Town Clerk Susan Kelly, Assistant Town Clerk Linda Savadi, and Town Council Jeffrey Blake and Shirin Everett. In front of you on your left are seated the members of the Finance Committee, Betsy Sullivan Chair, Frank Mangione, Lawrence Friedman, Fernando Guitart, Nathaniel Taylor, Kathleen Glynn, Jerry Pozzani, Peter Sullivan, and Edward Venna. Sitting in front of them are some of the members of your Fiscal Advisory Committee. My name is John Tuffy and I am the Town Moderator. The hall today is divided into six voting sections numbered as following. Section 1 is the small section on the main floor in the front to my left. Section 2 is the center section in the front. Section 3 is the small section in the front to my right. Section 4 is the section of the balcony in the rear to my left. Section 5 is the center section of the balcony, and Section 6 is the section of the balcony to my right. Visitors will be seated in the far rear of the balcony to my left in the last rows behind Section 4, which are marked for non-visitors. I'm sorry, non-voters. Please note that if a hand count is taken, the tellers will not be counting voters who are seated in the non-voting section. Microphones are located in the back of the hall behind the center balcony, Section 5, at the foot of each of the balcony aisles where they meet the stairs down on the main floor, behind voting sections 1 and 3 on the main floor, and here in front between the Selectmen and Finance Committee tables. Former moderator friend Wile has been sworn in as an assistant moderator and will assist as necessary. Assisted listening devices are available on the table next to the entrance on the main floor, right behind Section 1. They are provided by the Municipal Commission on Disabilities. The fire chief has requested that I point out the fire exits from this room. There are two fire exits on the lower level of the auditorium, one to my immediate right, your left, and one on my left where you entered the room. There are also two fire exits on the upper level of the room at the rear of the hall behind the balconies. Please do not block these exits by standing or placing anything such as chairs in front of them. The fire chief has also requested that you not sit in the aisles or on the stairs between the balcony and the main floor. I request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session except for public safety officials. For your information, this meeting is being taped. As we start the meeting, you will notice that motions will be projected on the screen that is directly behind me, and I encourage everybody to get copy of the handouts that were available on the table when you came in, as they may become very valuable as we go forward with tonight's meeting. I'd like to review with you certain town meeting procedures. Upon checking in, registered voters were issued a handheld voting device. The voting device entitles you to be seated in a voting section. If you have an issue with your voting device, please go to the teller desk, which is in the hallway immediately outside the main entrance to this room, and they will issue you a new one. Any voter who is unable to use the voting device is asked to sit in a reserved section and will be assisted during the voting. Their votes will be handed to the moderator to be included in the vote total. The voting process will be as follows. After debate is over, the moderator will call for a vote. A light will go on next to the moderator's podium. The moderator will announce, "Please vote." Voters will have 20 seconds to vote. When 20 seconds have passed, the moderator will announce that votes are closed and the light will go out. To use handheld devices, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 3 can be used to clear a vote if you press a button in error and allow you to enter the correct number. The screen on the handheld device will display 1 for yes, 2 for no. If the handheld voting system fails, we will use a voice vote or a hand count. If a hand count becomes necessary, the voting device must be held up when the vote is counted. The tellers have been instructed to count only votes cast by persons who are holding voting devices in their hands and who are seated in the voting section. To ensure accuracy, all hand votes will be counted by two tellers. This may require some additional time and request your cooperation and patience. As part of the check-in procedure, tellers have been authorized and instructed by the Board of Registars to request positive identifications in case of doubt. If we... At this point in our town meeting, we customarily vote to give permission to speak to town employees and officials who are not registered voters in the town of Duxbury. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to allow town employees and officials to speak should the occasion arise. A motion has been made and seconded to permit town employees and officials to address the meeting. A majority vote is required, and in our first opportunity to use the handheld device. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is now open. Voting is closed, and the motion passes 190 to 12. This meeting is governed by the statute of our town bylaws and town meeting times. In addition, I suggest we abide by the following procedures so that we may conduct the business of the meeting in an orderly fashion. After I have announced that we are considering the article, the article will be moved by the Finance Committee and their recommendations will be heard. I will then give the proposer of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. In those cases where there's been an organized or recognized opposition to the article, which has been identified to me, I will then give the opponent of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. Upon completion of those remarks, the matter will be open for general debate. If you wish to speak, I request that you go to one of the microphones. After you have been recognized by me, would you please identify yourself by name and street address? I will also request that all speakers limit their remarks to a maximum of five minutes, and ask that speakers do not attempt to be recognized for a second time on discussion of any article until other persons who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so for the first time. Any lengthy or complicated motions or amendments should be submitted in writing so that we will know precisely what's being voted upon and so that we can maintain an accurate record of the proceedings. Town Council is available to assist if you have any questions about drafting any such motions. One of the things that often comes up is a motion to move the previous question or move the question. A motion to move the previous question ends debate. It takes a two-thirds vote. It's a useful motion at town meetings, but there are some concerns that it could be used or abused. To that end, we have two procedures that we will follow. I will not accept a motion for the previous question from someone who has just finished speaking on an article, eliminating the vehicle as a way to get in the last word. And second, as I previously announced, the order of speakers that I will recognize an article are the fincom for the motion, the report of the Finance Committee, opening remarks by proponents if any. In addition, any organized or recognized opponents of an article who have been identified, we will hear their opening remarks. After those reports and opening remarks by proponents and opponents, if any, the article will then be open for general debate. And until the article is open for general debate, I will not accept a motion to move the previous question. Reconsideration is something that often comes up as well. The last annual town meeting voted to change the town bylaw that allows reconsideration. As in the past, a motion to reconsider requires the same quantitative vote as the original motion. It must be made at the same session as the original motion or the next succeeding session. It may only be made once, and this is a change, a motion to reconsider may only be considered if the proponent provides, in the opinion of the moderator, factual information that was not available during the session when the original vote was taken. So I mentioned motion to move the previous question and reconsideration. If it comes up during the meeting, we'll take a little more time to explain exactly what it means. Finally, if we don't finish the warrant tonight, which I can't imagine, upon completion of tonight's session, I will entertain a motion to recess this special town meeting until tomorrow, Friday, September 7th at 7:00 PM at this place. Mrs. Sullivan, may we now have a motion under Article 1 for the special town meeting?
Article 1. Subject: Stabilization spending. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $160,000 for the purpose of funding a legal deficit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $160,000 from the stabilization fund.
Second.
I will speak to the article?
Please.
I won't take up too much of your time. We voted 7-1 to recommend this because we really have very few choices. If you end the year in deficit, then one has to balance the books before the tax rate can be set. I'm sure that our Finance Director will be much more eloquent and informative than I'm being, but just suffice to say that because at last year's annual town meeting, a motion was made to spend up to the levy limit, we did not have any funds in reserve to use to balance our books, and therefore, we are here tonight. Had we not done that and used what I think is the Finance Committee's recommendation of best practice to leave a certain amount in the tank, if you will, then we would have been able to balance the books on the recap in the fall and not have a special town meeting. So, teachable moment. When we meet next March and we are struggling with some of the same issues, I would ask that folks remember that things do happen after March town meeting, like three nor'easters and other natural disasters that can cost the town money, and that we are much better able to manage through those things if we have indeed left some money in our reserve. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Adams, your Finance Director. As we are most all keenly aware, in March 2018, we witnessed multiple nor'easter events. The first storm named Riley was the most damaging, which brought hurricane-force winds to coastal New England and contributed to power outages, downed trees, power lines, and damaged our seawalls in three separate locations. One week later, the second nor'easter hit as recovery efforts were still going on from Storm Riley. The costs incurred that we incurred from March 2nd to the 5th as a result of Storm Riley was roughly $327,000 and has broken out in the following departments. Fire and dispatch, $28,000. Facilities management for damages to HVACs and buildings, et cetera, $28,000. Police, $20,000. And the Department of Public Works had various costs totaling $250,000, of which $145,000 was to stabilize the seawall. The costs incurred from the March 7th to 8th, the result of the second storm was roughly about $32,000. And then we had annual town meeting, which occurred on March 10th. With little time to estimate these emergency expenses, locate a funding source, and fit into an already existing town meeting warrant, we chose to delay paying off a ban on the Powder Point Bridge repairs, which was Article Number 5 of the special town meeting. We changed that from 190 to 8 to its bare minimum required of 7,200, thus freeing up $185,600 of free cash to cover the majority of the estimated costs. Not knowing what the overall damage may be to the breach in the seawall, a letter was drafted to the Director of Accounts, Department of Revenue, for approval of the deficit spend under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, 31, and we thus received approval so that we could address any additional and unknown costs of the seawall. At year-end, I was pleased to report that with the help of the special town meeting funding, some reserve fund transfers and municipal relief transfers, insurance reimbursements, and good management practices overall, departments, with the exception of the Department of Public Works, were able to close the year without any deficits. The Department of Works, and more specifically, Department Number 422, Highway, General Expenses, there still remains a deficit of $160,000, $90,000 of which occurred after town meeting for engineering to enable us to apply for grants relating to seawall repairs. So it is $160,000 that requires funding at this special town meeting here tonight to fund the deficit. Because of the timing of special town meeting in September, it's too early to get our free cash certified, and the town does not estimate having any excess levy capacity to support this or any other articles in this warrant. The only funding source available right now is from stabilization account. It is the intention of the Finance and Administration to refund the stabilization fund at such time as our free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue, and the town meeting has duly voted. The current balance in our stabilization account is $4.47 million, which is roughly equal to about 6.12 percent of our general fund operating expenditures. If all of these articles pass here tonight, our stabilization account balance will be $3.83 million or 5.24 percent of our general fund operating expenditures. And the town's fiscal policies require that we keep our stabilization balance between 5 to 10 percent of our general fund operating expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, we'll move for a vote. Since this comes from a stabilization fund, it will take a two-thirds vote for this to pass. So, that having been said, voting is now open. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. The article passes 316 yes, 24 no. Article Number 2, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article 2. Subject: Seawall repair easements. I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase gift and/or eminent domain and to confirm and ratify the prior acquisitions of the fee-to and/or permanent and/or temporary easements for the purpose of constructing, inspecting, maintaining, repairing, reconstructing, reinforcing, and/or replacing the Duxbury Beach seawall and/or related support structures and... I can't say that word. You say it. ...pertinences and in, on, and under parcels of land abutting the entire length of the seawall as approximately shown on a plan entitled "Duxbury Beach Seawall Plan of Land" prepared by Bryant Associates, Inc., dated June 24, 1996, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 39, Page 360. As said, plan may be amended, consisting of land 15 feet on the landward side of the seawall and land within 30 feet of the seaward side of said seawall as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Reed, are you going to address it?
Good evening, and thank you for attending this evening. We appreciate you being here. As many of you know, probably saw on the news, last March was a heck of a month. It started with the collapse of approximately 800 feet of a 4,200-foot seawall on north end of town. As part of the repair process to this, whether it be minor repairs made at this town meeting or larger repairs contemplated at a future town meeting, the town needs the ability to have access to do these repairs. Through this article, what we would be doing is achieving a 15-foot easement on the landward side, that is, the side of the wall toward the houses, which exists currently. In some places, though, the easement varies from 9 to 12 to 15 feet. So what we're trying to do is achieve uniformity so that our repair crews will have the ability to work within the proper area. The work will actually occur on the seaward side, so the easements on the seaward side would go from 15 to 30 feet. The idea is to be able to have better access because the primary work occurs on the seaward side, so that is the purpose of the article.
Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is there any funding involved in this article? And the reason I ask is that there is, it does speak to a fee, and I'm wondering if there is going to be money necessary in order to get any of these easements.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, ma'am, there is no money associated with this article.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Wayne Hewitt, Soul Avenue. And I have a question regarding the ownership rights of beachfront property, and I'm under the impression that landowners own to the line of Mean Low Tide, and I'm wondering, obviously, as I recall from walking down there, there's 30 feet of dry land below, but is, am I correct in that assumption that the beach owners own to the Mean Low Tide line?
Let's see if we can't get you an answer, Mr. Hewitt.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was going to give you accurate information. It's our understanding that the owners own to the Mean Low Watermark.
Thank you very much. If you could introduce yourself.
Mary Lynn Carson, 21 Washington Street. I just had a question. Who currently owns the seawall?
The state of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth, the state, owns the seawall.
All right. But the previous question just established that the owners of the land own it down to the low tide mark.
That's correct. However, the wall was constructed in the early '50s by the state.
All right, and the state owns the wall?
That is correct.
And the town of Duxbury's responsibility is...
Is to maintain the wall.
Is to maintain the wall.
In fact, when the wall was constructed in the early '50s, the funding was, 50 percent was borne by the state, 25 percent was borne by Plymouth County, and 25 percent was paid for by the town of Duxbury.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? With your permission, I'll call for a vote. This vote? Please, sir.
My name is Bernard Graham on Puritan Way, and my question is, why is it that we have some of these easements that happened in the '90s and we didn't get the rest of them? Is it just an oversight? Could you visit that, please?
I can give you anecdotal information. It may have been oversight by some of the property owners. Ownership changed. Some people had the easement signed but not recorded. Some had the easements never signed and not recorded. So we have a variety of issues. The idea of this article is to perfect that scenario and make it so that everything's uniform so that we can begin construction at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brogner, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Paul Brogner, 21 Village Way. I'm a member of the Seawall Committee, and I would question the response a few minutes ago from Town Council relative to who owns the beach. I am a local engineer, and I've done a number of waterfront projects, both on the Powder Point, King Caesar Bay roadside of town, and also over on the beach on Guerna Road. And based on our survey's research records in most of the properties, many homeowners may have rights down to the Mean Low water. They may own to the threat of the stream or whatnot, but many... But in many cases, they have rights, but they physically do not own the beach. They don't own all the way to the high tide and the low tide line. We've been told that the Greenwich Road area is a public beach, just like it is in Marshfield and Situate. It's been that way for generations. I grew up in Marshfield, and that's the way it was when we were growing up. And I think, not to get too far ahead of us here, but this is an important issue as we deal with the next two articles as well. But based on the legal wording of the meets and bounds of these deeds, many people do have legal rights to the mean-low water, but they physically don't own it. It's not part of the square footage of their lots, and traditionally, they do not pay taxes on the area beyond the meets and bounds of their property. So I would at least ask that question one more time and look at it because it's an important issue, especially dealing with Article three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brogner. Are we ready for a vote?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can I ask it? May I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Okay. Marie Keefe, Elm Street. I just have a question because I've been trying to follow this. I've never really worked on fiscal advisory and so forth, but I want to get this straight. So what I'm hearing you say is, the state was responsible for 50% of the cost of building the wall. The county was responsible for 25% of building the wall. The town of Duxbury was responsible for 25% of building the wall. Does that mean that the responsibility for maintaining it is also 50, 25, 25?
Mr. Reed.
Thank you. In everything that I have read, the maintenance and repairs to the wall have always been borne by the town at 100% cost. What we've done, in the case of these instant examples with the massive failures of the wall, is we've applied to the state for $3 million worth of grant funding. We're supposed to hear about that this month. We've also got an application in with FEMA for reimbursement, but that's something that we'll bring up at the March town meeting. So, by and large, the town has done all the maintenance and repair to the wall.
Does the state, does FEMA, do those places, organizations, or whatever, do they normally contribute when you have such massive problems?
Depending on the nature of the beast. In fact, with respect to the FEMA funding, FEMA acts, as their acronym suggests, as an emergency situation. If something is broken and there's a federal emergency declared, FEMA comes in and they reimburse communities for money that they expend on repair projects. The state has a funding mechanism through its grant program, through its bridge and seawall program, that allows the state, that allows communities to seek funding to replace failing walls. This is what Marshfield has done, Situate. Basically, what's happened is Duxbury has finally been caught in a game that Marshfield and Situate have been playing for decades. So we're sort of the last end of the line on this one. So we are applying for the same competitive grants that they are.
Okay. And have Marshfield and Situate been fairly successful in their bids for money?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Farrell, 24th Street. Could someone please explain the concept of rolling easements? And will rolling easements be included in this effort to deal with repair over longer periods of time?
Forgive me, I don't know what a rolling easement is.
Is there no one that can address the subject, the rolling easements?
Counsel has advised that that's not a legal term.
That's not a legal term.
Correct.
It's something, and I don't know much about it. I'm just getting up to speed like a lot of people here, and it's come up to my attention that a rolling easement has to deal with over time as property owners need to move their property back from the sea as the sea and everything that they were trying to address here encroaches more and more over time. And so that easement that gets prepared or gets enacted needs to change over time. So it will change in its geographic location. That's about as little as I know, but if there's no one else that can address it, I would suggest that some information be put out to the town in various ways that we can understand more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Yes, Brian Cook, 105 St. George Street. I'm a practicing attorney. I've worked in this area for over 30 years. It's fairly clear that I don't know what's going on here, and most of the people in this room don't. So unless Town Council can tell us what rights we're giving away, how property rights are being changed, and the next vote is going to be how we're going to pay for it. You're asking us to pay for something we don't even know what it is we're buying. I think this should be tabled until a time where people in this audience who are going to pay for it actually understand what they're being asked to pay for.
If I may. Just to clarify, there is no money associated with this, so it's not an issue of paying for anything. But I'll ask Council to address that question for you.
So there is no warrant article on the warrant tonight that deals with us paying for this wall?
No, that's not true. This article does not have any funding associated with it.
Right, but there will be one that will. So these people will be asked to pay.
That is correct.
And once we approve this, we're opening the door to write the check. So until we know what we're writing the check for, I don't think you can ask people to give up their rights.
Again, I'll ask Council to address your question.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, through you. The easement allows the town to go onto your property to fix the seawall. It allows the town to go repair it, fix it, and, you know, those are the rights, and maintain it in good condition. Those are the rights that you're giving the town. It's usually for the benefit of the property owners because the town is coming in and fixing your property or fixing the stone wall that's protecting your property. So those are the rights.
And I agree, and I understand, that you're protecting that owner's rights, not these owner's rights. And according to the people at Woods Hole, seawalls in and of themselves are dangerous and change the tidal flow. They change the beachfront. They change the littoral drift of sands, effectively only benefiting the house that lives behind it. So we're being asked to pay for one house or two houses, but not for the entire town. Is that correct?
I am not sure who's being asked to pay what, but...
Well, I think someone should be from Town Council if you're going to ask us to write the check.
I think the seawall is a, is not just for property owners that stay behind the wall, but it's also protecting your beach. I don't know the exact ecological and environmental effects of a seawall, but the idea is to protect beach so that the public continues to have the right to use it and enjoy it, as well as to protect the people behind the seawall. So I don't think there's a special private benefit. I think there's also a public benefit from it.
If you'll go ahead, madam.
Joanne Kingsley, Lakeshore Drive. I have a few questions and concerns. First of all, you say that the easements have not been kept up with, and that now you're trying to fix that problem. Concerned, why haven't they been kept up with? Second of all is, the beach is supposedly owned by the federal government, is what we've been told. But recently, I understand what we're doing here as well, that's why I have these concerns, that the Conservation Preservation Committee controls how it goes. So we pay to use the beach. It's not free, just to let you know. And so you pay a lot to go there. And either a vehicle to drive it, or you have to park. The concern is, it's not benefiting anybody who's already paying again. We pay on taxes, but this is not being, the easements haven't been taken care of, which I feel is lax on the Towns Department. I feel that asking us, the Conservation, Beach Commission, whatever it was, controls when the beach can be open and closed. And I'm not talking about for pipers, I'm off of nature. But recently, for a drone to go around the town, the beach, to determine things. The other concern is that, when I lived on beach property in another town, we were responsible for contributing to the wall because it is, as the gentleman said, it does change the things in the ocean and the whole landscape. Asking town members to pay for this when we have, most of us on other side of town have no access to it anyways unless we pay. And again, pay taxes and pay to use it. So it's not a freebie by any means. Other towns have already come up and said, some of the contractors, when they were asked if they could guarantee the wall to work, they said they could not guarantee anything against nature. So we could be throwing more money away. This is something that is not benefiting the whole town. It is benefiting some of the landowners, which I feel bad for. When we had, on the beach, we had to pay for our wall and the damage to it, back in '78 and all, in Situate and down that area. So this is not new to some of us who have lived on the coast. If you choose to live on the coast, you choose to take that risk. I have a real problem with asking to be paying more taxes for something that is not a benefit of the town. Or easements that have not been taken care of. I find the town very lax in their business dealings not to take care of that.
Thank you. Mr. Dowling, did you?
With respect to the easements, again, as I had said, in some cases, easements were recorded, in other cases, they weren't. And the ones that weren't recorded were either lacking a signature, or they weren't submitted in a timely fashion, or ownership had changed, people were deceased. So again, the concept here is to perfect that.
But the town is so controlling on this issue and asking us to put out so much more. If that happened on an area that wasn't on the beach, you would be more into it. The Conservation Commission coming around and saying you can't cut trees down. So all of a sudden, on the easements, it's lax? I don't get it.
Well, again, this is something that we're talking about 20, 25 years ago. So this is trying to correct that error.
I don't feel that I should be responsible for the errors that the town has not kept up on things. When they choose to keep up on things, they do. When they choose not to, they don't. And I don't feel that we should be agreeing to things like that.
This wasn't, the onus here wasn't on the town, it was on the homeowners. So the town is trying to do this to help, to assist the homeowners.
So that the cost is...
It wasn't because the town didn't record them, it was because the homeowners didn't.
So is the cost for the town to go around doing, getting these easements then? Either way, is it a cost?
Well, we presume that there won't be any money exchanged for the easement since we would conceptually be repairing the wall.
And who's doing the time to get all this information? Is there no cost involved in that?
There are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woman up here to my right in the back who's patiently been waiting, and then we'll get to you, sir.
Nancy Vaney, Standish Street. I have one question. You said that this is not just a benefit for the homeowners who live in that part of the beach. You said that it's for the whole town. How could it be for the whole town? Would it be just for the water pipes out to their houses, for the gas lines out to their houses? It's just a little part of Duxbury Beach. And my second question is, if we pay for it, if it happens, and global warming actually happens, probably, some people believe the scientists, but some people don't, but nobody says it's not going to happen, the sea isn't going to happen, the sea is not going to rise. If the sea rises and all this is for nothing, what are we going to do? Also, are we going, there are a lot of houses on Standish Shore that are close to the ocean. When the sea rises, will the town come out and build seawalls for them?
Presumably, part of your question is rhetorical. With respect to the seawall, excuse me, with respect to the ocean rising and, you know, climate change, we won't get into that if you don't mind because it's a long discussion. But the part I will address is the one with respect to, what if we do nothing? You know, sure, it's a small part of Duxbury. It encompasses 192 homes, you know, with families living there.
So what is the percentage of 15,000?
If you would just let Mr. Reed answer the question, please.
Without that, if it were to be obliterated tomorrow, God forbid, by a hurricane, the tax burden on everybody in this room would then be borne by all of us. I live over on Franklin Street, I'm about as far from the wall as you can get, but we would have to make up that two, two and a half million dollar tax burden by all of us paying for it. That's why we do these things.
I'm not sure that... Our taxes pay for a town of 15,000. If we lose 200 families, we won't have that much to pay.
I think... Please. I'm going to recognize the gentleman in the upper left-hand corner, my left, and then to you down here, sir. Please.
Hello, my name is Thomas Ne, I live at 590 Bay Road. I haven't heard anything to say that this is a wise move. Everything that I understand about beach erosion, I'm not an expert, is that seawalls increase net erosion. I would like to hear from an unbiased, objective expert in this field to tell me that a seawall is a wise decision.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back.
Larry Delaney, Pine Road, one of the 200, apparently. A few things. First, I want to address the article, the first sentence. It says that the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain. I would like to know which of those the town is choosing before the article is chosen. And secondly, to respond to some misinformation, the seawall, when it was built in 1953, was not built for houses, there were only a few there. It was built as protection for the barrier beach. And one of the things that gets lost in this debate is that there's a bridge that goes to private property. There's a school that was paid for by all the taxpayers and other expenses, senior centers. The seawall protects, believe it or not, the entire town. If Greenwich Road is cut off, the bay, the bridge, and everything else, sewage systems will be cut off. So there's a misconception, because there's only 200 homes, that this seawall isn't serving a purpose. It was built to serve a purpose over 50 years ago, and that purpose hasn't changed. The barrier beach itself, Duxbury Beach, is protected mostly from storms from the south and from the west because Cape Cod protects it. The open alley to the North Atlantic comes straight in through, which was part of the design on why the wall is where it is. So I would ask people to be patient, to understand some of the complications involved in these issues, whether it's about easements and why they haven't occurred is irrelevant. The ocean is coming, no matter what we do, and we need to be prepared for it.
Mr. Dowling.
Hello. In listening to everybody here, I realize we probably should have had a public hearing before this so everybody became more aware. What we're actually addressing in this article is easements only. When the Board of Selectmen took this up for a discussion, we said, this is a very complicated issue. All the questions that were raised here, is a wall a good thing? Who owns the wall? Who owns the beach in the front of the wall? There's a million questions. Those questions couldn't be answered fast enough in order to get here, and also, we had no idea what the funding would be because we were applying for grants and hoping to get those grants. So the intention was, okay, let's take the first step. We can't do anything, and it doesn't obligate us to do anything either if we don't have the easements. So let's go to this town meeting and ask for the easement, or to get permission to take the easement. And the answer to your question is, it's going to be a taking. It's not going to be, the town isn't handing out checks, there's no money in this article to pay anybody anything. It's a taking of an easement to allow the town, if a future town meeting, votes to do the improvements. Now, it's also, there is true, and Mr. Cook brought it up, there's, in the next article, there's $60,000 that is being asked for, 60, 65?
65.
$65,000 that's being asked for to buy stone to place in the broken parts temporarily this winter, if necessary, to protect what's already been done. What happened in the winter storm is beach reservation donated all the stones along the beach road and a bunch of other things. They're all round stone. You can't use a round stone to build a stone wall. It's like putting marbles on top of each other. So eventually, real stone has to be brought in. And so the $65,000 is something that we came up with as a number, with the town doing the work, the cheapest possible way. Now, this is a stop-gap measure. Now, this is a stopgap measure. That's all it is. So, and, but that's the next town, that's the next vote, that's not this vote. What's being brought up here is very good questions. I've asked the same thing myself. Should I pay another dime, more than I'm paying right now in real estate taxes? Who should pay, who should have that burden? That won't, all those discussions won't be, won't be discussed, or necessary to discuss, until annual town meeting, when there's a whole program in front of you. This is what's being proposed. This is how much it's going to cost. Do you want to spend it? This is who's going to pay for it. All those questions will be answered at that time. I've asked the question of town council, and it's a very complicated thing, when somebody asked, who owns, do you own, everybody owned a mean low water. Well, the only way to know that answer is to charge town council, I want you to research and do a title search for every single parcel down there. You know what that would cost? We don't have the resources to do that right now. But that, that has to be done at some point in time to make sure we're doing the right thing. So what the Board of Selectmen was trying to do in putting this together was take it one baby step at a time. Let us have the right to take the easement. Let us have the, we'll come back at the next, at the annual town meeting and ask for whatever we're going to ask for at that time. But we won't know that until March. And in the meantime, we're asking for sixty thousand dollars to stopgap it. Sixty-five thousand dollars to stopgap it. Because the bottom line is, if we didn't have the sixty-five thousand dollars, and guess what? A piece of seawall drops into the ocean, no one's going to happen. DPW is going to be down there and doing the work, and you're going to be back here voting another emergency override, because nobody's going to stand by and watch a catastrophe happen. It's as simple as that. So that's what the sixty-five is for.
But that's next.
Having, having said that, so there's no confusion, when we actually vote on this, you will not be voting on sixty-five thousand dollars, that will come up when we deal with Article Three, the next article. This is, is just for the easements. I'm going to recognize the gentleman in the upper left-hand corner, we'll get to you, Mr. Lampert, and then we'll get the woman in the back. Sir.
Steve Farrell, twenty Ford Street. On the subject of rolling easements, and just in case, I wanted to just let everybody know here, on your side over there, there's a report out dated December thirty-first, twenty-eleven, South Shore Coastal Hazards Adaption Study, funded by the MAPC. And on page ten, it talks about shoreline change, and it says, let's see here, the shoreline change in Situitt and Marshfield, for instance, has been going at the rate of two foot or greater per year. So I'm all for the easement, but if you're going to do an easement, get it, get the right easement. That was my only point.
Thank you. Mr. Lampert.
Jim Lampert, one forty-eight Washington Street. Now, I've been a little confused, I think I have a question that is probably best answered by town council. Is, I understand the situation here. The state, and not Ducksbury, owns the seawall. I think, and this is partially for town council, that if we go ahead and repair the seawall, the town of Ducksbury is clearly responsible for twenty-five percent of the cost, and what happens on the rest of the cost, frankly, depends on what we get in way of reimbursements from FEMA and/or the state. Which leads me to the question, because I think there's a difference. Do we have an obligation to repair, a legal obligation to repair the seawall? Because my understanding, and I'll admit it's probably imperfect, was that we do not have a legal obligation to repair the seawall, but if the town should decide to do so, then we will bear some of the costs. And I think this is really a question for town council.
Does town council have an answer? That'll be fine.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeffrey Blake, and thank you guys for having me. I'm glad that I've sat through probably thirteen or fourteen hours of your town meeting, and I finally get to talk to you guys. So, thank you for having me. The question, I believe, is, are we obligated to repair the seawall? At some point, under the Massachusetts Tort Claims Act, we are immune from intentional torts, we are immune from negligence with respect to a negligent design. However, there is a question as to whether or not we are legal, there's any liability for negligent maintenance. And since we do handle the maintenance of the, of the wall, there may be an issue as to whether or not we fail to maintain the wall, which this could very well fall within there. Now, I don't want to sit in here and tell the entire town that we're liable for something. Those are very, very fact-specific analysis, and I, and I just can't make that call right now. So I, I can't say unequivocally that we aren't obligated to do it. With respect to the gentleman over here, when we were talking about ownership of the lots to the low-water mark, when I had whispered to, to your town manager, I had said to him, that, that's typical, that's the general rule. I can see this gentleman has actually done more homework and done a title search and found that these, these lots, in fact, did not own to the, to the low-water mark. As, as one of the selectmen just pointed out, we weren't asked to go through and do all the title work, because why get the cart before the horse? Because if we weren't going to get the, the authority from you folks to get the easements, then the title work would have been an expenditure that probably wasn't necessary. So to, to kind of clarify my earlier answer, once we get the authority, if we get the authority, we will then go through, do the necessary work. But we're assuming for purposes of, of our conversation, that we're going to have to get all those. If we do the title work and we find out that, that the town has the easement rights to the, to the ocean side, or, or that we don't need to get that easement, great. But for purposes of our conversation, we assume the general rule, and that is the general rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Woman in the back.
Eve Penoyer, fifty-nine Tussockburg Road. As an attorney, I'm going to take exception to the various representations that have been made, that there are no costs to, to the town taxpayers associated with this article. Your language here says that one of the options is by purchase, and that implies spending money. So if, if in fact, purchase isn't contemplated, I believe this article should be amended, and I would propose an amendment to strike the word "purchase." I have no problem with gift, a gratis transfer by the homeowner, I have no problem with eminent domain. But even in the case of a gift, and even in the case of eminent domain, there still will be legal fees, and that will be a cost to the town. So I think the representations that this is a free article to us is, are really not accurate. So is it reasonable to propose an amendment to strike the word "purchase"?
Well, I think, Mr.
If purchase isn't contemplated?
I think Mr. Reed has, has some comments, and then we'll deal with your question of the amendment, if that's all right with you.
Okay, sure.
All right. Mr. Reed.
Forgive me for not having more accurately characterized the article. I should have said that there is no money associated, being, being associated with this article. In other words, we're not looking for an expenditure here. There's no money associated with it, as, as was the case with Article One, Three, or Four. There's no direct expenditure. So forgive me that.
Well, if a purchase is made, how's it going, where's the money going to come from?
We weren't even contemplating a purchase.
But it's in the article.
That's correct.
So I'd like to see that amended, to strike that as an option.
I'm going to ask town council to, to weigh in on this, and then we'll deal with it.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Jeffrey Blake, town council. Thank you. What we typically do is, with, with respect to this Warren article, gift, purchase, eminent domain, it gives us all of the options. We can't purchase without coming back to town meeting to get an appropriation. But what it does is, it allows the Board of Selectmen in, in, in the off-case, or the off-chance, that there's a situation where we may have to, to, to purchase, and what we may have to do there is try to negotiate a purchase, and then come back to, to, to town meeting to say, this was a special case. I, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but this doesn't tie the hands of the Board of Selectmen. And again, they can't expend the funds to purchase anything without coming back here and getting an appropriation.
I'd just comment back on that. It seems to me that if the town, or the town in conjunction with the state and the county, are going to repair this seawall, that it's, would be pretty unreasonable for those homeowners to expect the town to pay them for the right to go on the property, to spend money to protect them. And in that case, I think, you know, a homeowner that would take advantage and try to negotiate a purchase when they're already getting seawall repairs done at, you know, without having to pay for it, except they're small percentages of taxpayer, to me, that would seem like a really unreasonable approach.
I, I mean, if you're, if, if that's a question, I, I can't, I can't.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm against allowing a purchase.
I can't argue with your logic. However, it, it's just that we typically put that language in there, because then it doesn't bind the hands of the, of the selectmen.
I, I understand why you're asking for it, but on the other hand, it, it opens the door for perhaps a greedy owner, who knows who they may be, to, to say, well, gee, buy it from me. And it seems to me that that would be very unfair to the town, and allowing it as an option opens the door to, to someone attempting that kind of negotiation, whereas I think the message from the town should be, look, we're coming in and doing this for you, and so either give us the easement, or we'll take it by eminent domain, but if you want your seawall repaired, those are, those are your choices. And to me, this would send a message from town meeting, striking the purchase language, that says the taxpayers really want to minimize the cost of this problem.
Understood, and, and I guess that's a, I, I just explained to you why the language is in there, and that's up to this body to determine whether or not.
And I, so I'd still like to propose that amendment, if anyone wants to second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so to be clear, as we, as we look at the, I'm sorry, I hadn't looked what was behind me for the longest time. As we look at the, as we look at the motion, it will now read, I move the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift and/or eminent domain, striking the word "purchase." Is that accurate?
Yes, that's the proposed amendment.
Do I have a second? I hear a second. We will now discuss the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll ask for, I'll ask for Mrs. McNabb.
Mr. Moderator, in spirit of the motion, which I am in favor of, because I did get up, my first question of the evening was associated with costs, exactly this language that now, all this time later, and I feel like I got a very disingenuous response to that. So not only is the word "purchase" a problematic word in this article, but in the next line are the words "the fee too," which speaks, I believe, to prior acquisitions. So that may also be problematic language if we're trying to avoid any costs to the town associated with these easements.
I'm, I'm going to ask town council to address the, the meaning of, of that particular phrase.
I find it confusing. They always are.
I'll say, I find it confusing.
The use of the word "fee" in the, in the motion refers to acquisitions of the fee simple ownership of property, which is the town buys land instead of easements. The word "fee" doesn't mean actually monetary fee.
Oh, you're, you're referring to title.
Correct, exactly.
Using the old, the old reference to title, okay.
Exactly.
Fee simple interest. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. So it was fee simple.
So dealing with the amendment, are there any other comments, questions about the amendment? So we will now vote on the amendment. If you are in favor of dropping the word "purchase," you want to vote for this amendment. If you're opposed to dropping the word, you want to vote no. Dealing with the amendment only, and then we will get back to the main article. All those in favor of dropping the word "purchase," press one. All those opposed would press two. Voting is now open. The amendment passes two hundred and eighty-one to one hundred and thirty-eight. So we now have an amended motion dropping the word "purchase." Mr. Martikini, you've been patiently waiting.
Andre Martikini, one-ten Heritage Lane. A question came up a little while ago, asking for an expert's opinion on what, you know, the benefit of a seawall is. I'm not sure, I'll classify myself as an expert, but I was the author of the Kleinfelter study that some of you may have read, dealing with sea level rise. So I think a short answer is, seawalls can contribute to accelerated erosion of, of beaches. For instance, if we were to try and protect Ducksbury Beach, not the area that we already have, the seawall, we would never want to put a seawall on, on a Ducksbury Beach now, because it would have all kinds of effects, negative effects. Having said that, we have a wall. It's been there for many, many years. It does protect infrastructure, it protects not only private, but it also protects Ducksbury-owned infrastructure. So the idea of, you know, saying, we're not going to do anything, and just turn our heads and say, we're not going to do anything with the wall, is probably not the best course of action, neither for the, the private homeowners nor the town of Ducksbury. So I, you know, in terms of these easements, I think it's absolutely important to do this now, approve the easements, because these are access easements. This allows the town, and whether we build the wall or not, in, in, in March, whether we approve it or not, we still need the easements, because the town still periodically does maintenance like we did last, last winter. So we need the easements, we should be taking care of these now, and so I'm in favor of this article.
Thank you. Recognize the gentleman in the back. Move the previous question, Mr. Moderator. We have a motion to move the previous question. I think we talked about this briefly when we started. A motion to move the previous question just ends debate. It, 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 it's a vote that says, we've, we've heard enough, we don't want to hear anymore, we want to go back and vote on the main motion. So if you, it just ends debate. If you vote yes on this motion, it will mean that we will then vote on the main motion which will come up. If you haven't heard enough and you still have more questions you want answered, you want to vote no, and then we will continue to discuss this question. That having been said, all those in favor of ending debate and moving on to the main motion, press one. All those who are interested in continuing this discussion, press two. Move the previous question passes three hundred and ninety-seven to thirty-two. I'm sorry, thirty-one, I stand corrected. So without further discussion, we're now back to the main motion. The motion is what you see behind me, having struck the word "purchase." All those in favor of the town moving forward with easements, press one. All those opposed, press two. The motion passes three hundred and sixty to seventy-one. Three hundred and sixty to seventy-one. Three hundred and sixty, yes. Seventy-one, no. 360 to 71. 360, yes. 71, no. We're now on to Article 3. Article 3, and we have had some discussion under the previous article about money and repairs. Article 3 will require a two-thirds vote if it passes, in order to pass it, since the money comes from stabilization fund. Mrs. Sullivan, if we could have a motion, please.
Article 3, stabilization spending seawall repairs. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $65,000 for the purpose of funding temporary repairs to the Duxbury Beach seawall that arose from the March 2018 storms, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $65,000 from the stabilization fund.
Second.
This Finance Committee originally voted 2 for 1, not in favor, but have gotten some additional information and revoted the article tonight and supported it unanimously. Fernando Catar will speak for the Finance Committee.
And then we will have a presentation from the Seawall Committee.
As Betsy said, we originally voted not to recommend this article. The concern was primarily the source of funding, stabilization fund, and the concern that this project would be, there was no guarantee of success of this project, right? So using stabilization funds for this purpose was not recommended by the Finance Committee. We had another meeting this afternoon, just before the special town meeting, and we were informed that in conversations with FEMA, FEMA will go ahead and verbally have told us that they will fund, they will provide us funding for the purchase of the stones to make the temporary repairs and the holes there in the amount of $65,000. So on that basis, that the funding will not come from stabilization, that we will be receiving this money from FEMA, that's the aspiration, right, town manager? Great. We voted 7 to 0 to recommend this article. Thank you.
Mrs. McNabb, I'm going to ask you to be patient. We have the Seawall Committee that will make a brief presentation, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you to everybody for coming tonight. My name is Alicia Babcock, and I'm the Chair of the Duxbury Seawall Committee. I've been a resident of Duxbury for 38 years, and I have a home on the Barrier Beach. And I'd like to take this opportunity to explain the function of law in Article 3 and its importance. The nor'easter last March sat over us through 11 high tides, which was unprecedented. Unfortunately, the town's seawall was not only in fragile condition, but it also did not have what we refer to as a revetment. This is a rock structure that acts as additional protection for the very bottom of the wall, called the footing or the toe. This armor stone is interlocked like a jetty, buried below the sand, and stands guard in the event a high tide removes enough sand to expose the toe. When the sand washes away, the revetment stays in place and provides support until the sand washes back in. So the reason a revetment is so important can be evidenced by what happened in March to the seawall in our town. As you can see from the photo, the storm surge eroded the sand away and exposed the footing. This is a problem, because when there is nothing supporting the base of the wall on the beachside, when the next storm tide comes in, seawater goes up and over the wall and under from behind, and then sections of the wall begin to tumble over. This action is what we refer This next slide shows the seawall at Ocean Road North on the left, and on the right, the complete failure at Cable Hill. Both areas experienced undermining at those missing sections. The seawall at Ocean Road North also has places where, as you can see, has experienced severe displacement as well. These sections are at high risk for future complete failure without further reinforcement. The boulders were put there by the town to plug up the holes during the emergency, but the machine only had time to drop the boulders over the wall between tides, not build a revetment. Currently, the most vulnerable areas still sit with only the emergency Band-Aids. There are steel plates leaning against these open areas and propped up with boulders. They were meant only for short-term protection. Over the last five months, they have settled and shifted, and our engineers are very concerned. They recommend that these temporary repairs be repositioned and secured with a properly engineered revetment in order to provide protection to that area for another season. Just to put it in perspective, the waves that were tossed on shore last winter moved 50-foot sections of wall weighing roughly 50 tons apiece. Each of these steel plates, depending on its size, weighs only 3,000 to 4,000 pounds, and would be no match for the force of future storm water without reinforcement. If a second failure were to happen in these areas, it would cause additional adjacent sections of the wall to come down in a domino effect, causing major problems, and major problems fast. When the wall failed at Cable Hill, those property owners lost 30 feet of their yard within two hours. Luckily, they sit eight feet above and 70 feet back from where the seawall used to be. So they had a window of time to build an emergency revetment to temporarily stop the erosion. This would not be the case at Ocean Road North. As you can see, these properties sit nine feet lower and very close to the wall, 50 feet closer. These people would not have the same time to react. So having the wall wash out here would be very dangerous and would cause a disaster. Homes and property could easily be demolished in Gurnett Road, which provides access to the public beach and carries utilities and sewer lines to the area, would be at serious risk. It does seem hard to believe, but it is a very real scenario. We've already addressed this previously, but just to clarify, although the seawall runs across private property, the abutters do not own it. The state owns the seawall, so homeowners are not authorized to make any repairs. It is the town that is responsible for the maintenance and repair of the wall. The Barrier Beach along Gurnett Road is also very narrow between the beach and the marsh. Part of what is so concerning is that should a scenario unfold where there is a breach in the seawall that can't be controlled, it could cause a breach in the Barrier Beach. If the ocean were to cut a channel somewhere across Gurnett Road, the Barrier Beach could become a barrier island. Then the town loses access to the beach from that direction. The only access at that point would be over the Powder Point Bridge. The good news is that our revetment protection is proven to work. That is the reason you'll see this method used all over the world, not just in other South Shore towns like Marshfield, Situate, Hull, and Quincy. There was a site assessment performed by the town manager, DPW Director, AMRE Engineering, and one of our Seawall Committee engineers. They collaborated and came up with a plan to minimize more damage for another season and reduce costs. The original estimate for the revetment work was $135,000, but they had gotten it down to 65. The plan is to do the project in-house instead of subcontracting the work, and that means the DPW will use its own labor and oversee the project. By doing this, it brings the cost way down and also allows us to spend almost all of the money on buying the rocks and even more of them. The bonus, of course, is that all of this revetment material will be reused and repurposed for Phase 1 of the seawall replacement next spring. This plan means nearly zero waste, and if we do nothing, the potential cost to the taxpayers could be astronomical and the cost to the area residents devastating. So we hope to have your support by voting yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. McNabb, you've patiently waited.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have two questions. So the $65,000, is that still being requested? I understand that you changed your vote, your recommendation vote, because we're being, is it reimbursed by FEMA, or so we no longer need the 65 for this?
Mr. Reed, do we have an answer?
We do. Hopefully, it's acceptable. The $65,000 is still being requested to be spent from stabilization. The conversation I had with FEMA actually took place this afternoon. I was speaking to our project manager, we've been assigned one, who will be meeting on-site with us in the next couple of weeks. And what I did was explain to her this project, which is to place stones in front of an existing wall. FEMA's purpose is to bring things back to the condition that they were prior to the damage, meaning their specific process is to replace and repair the wall that was broken. This is above and beyond that. And so I said to her, I said, "What other steps could we take? What other funding might be available from FEMA to do this work?" She said, "We have a mitigation program. When we employ the mitigation program, that means that FEMA would not reimburse us, but they would fund it at 100 percent." Now, because this was a phone discussion, I mean, I take that for what it is. It's a conversation on the phone. This is house money we're playing with, and I don't like to play with house money. So what I want to do is recommend to the voters here to consider approving this article for the authorization to spend stabilization money if we need to. It doesn't need, the article doesn't, the motion doesn't need to be conditioned as such. The idea is to simply move forward with the project. Once FEMA has come down, taken a look at it, and said, "Yes, go ahead. We're going to do the wall," and then just simply have them pay for it. If we never use the money, we don't spend a dime of it, and it just sits in stabilization. It's an insurance, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I always like a little bit of a cleaner answer, but, so that worries me a bit. And I do ask now, I direct the question to the Finance Committee. You are protective of our stabilization fund. I appreciate that. I know many of the voters do. And does this not cause you concern that, that, does that answer not cause you concern? And is your recommendation still approval?
So, as we had said before originally, because of the article and the original presentation, which was simply that it would be funded from stabilization, we did not want to spend the money. The additional information gave, given to us today with these conversations, I feel as comfortable as I'm ever going to feel that we have two bites of the apple. One would be that the stones that we're going to be buying, or that we could possibly buy to the $65,000, could be then rolled into the FEMA reimbursement as materials that will be used for the repair that we are storing on-site. It's a reasonable assumption, and Rainey did ask that if we did buy materials that would be used for the reimbursable part of the program, if we purchased them earlier, was that a detriment? The answer was no. The second happy surprise was the second bite at the apple, which is that there is this subsequent fund, which could give us even more money to make these repairs. And nothing is certain. I hate spending stabilization. It makes me nuts. But I felt, and we discussed tonight, the committee voted, that there was enough of confidence in the fact that these were two very reasonable approaches to be having the monies returned to us or never taken to begin with, that we were willing to support this repair for the winter.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. And my final question on this article, I think, I hope, is, and I don't know if you can answer this, but do we have an approximate cost of how much we have spent on this seawall to date with all of the repairs, the Band-Aids, as they've been classified?
Mr. Reed.
Well, the 150 in repairs or Band-Aids, some of those funds, I think, will be sent, given back to us when we go with FEMA. So we don't have a bottom line, not to my comfort level, because we haven't finished exhausting FEMA grants, state, anybody that has any money tied to helping us when there's a disaster. And we will certainly encourage and explore every opportunity to get state and/or federal funds to replenish any expense that we've had.
But to date, your best guess is about 150?
That's the estimate, but I can't give you an exact number. I can't break it out and tell you exactly what we spent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Hewitt, Soul Avenue. I would like some clarification from Mr. Reed on the, as I understand it, a verbal, and I don't want to use the word commitment, I don't think that's, but what exactly, where do we stand with respect to reimbursement at this point? And secondly, if we don't know, I'm trying to get a handle as to, you know, the potential cost of this thing. And I remember reading somewhere, it's like 34 million for a new seawall. Is that?
Please. What was your first question, Wayne? I'm sorry.
The first question dealt with, you said you had, I believe, a verbal commitment.
Correct.
And I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because then I believe you said she hasn't seen the.
I'm with you. I know where you're headed.
And I worry about someone making a verbal commitment without even seeing the construction site.
Yes, I've got your question. Thank you. Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with it, too, which is why I'm still recommending that the voters consider approving the $65,000 from stabilization. And believe me, if anybody hates spending money from stabilization, it's me. It's the last place we go to for money. To think that I would stand here and recommend to you people and first run the gauntlet of the Finance Committee and say, "Hey, guess what? I've got an article." Not just one, but I've got four. And I think we should spend stabilization money. I'm a crazy man for doing that. It's the last place I wanted to go, but I had no other avenue. So that's why we're where we are now. With respect to the overall costs, the estimates range, right now, when we get to March, and I'm sorry to talk about it, but because you've asked the question, I'll answer it. When we get to March, we're going to consider spending money on repairing 800 feet of a 3,800-foot seawall. Just to repair that 800 feet is in the neighborhood of $5 to $5.5 million. So if you extrapolate that, you're talking about a $25 to $30 million wall. That's not unheard of. That's basically what the going rate is for seawalls. The interesting thing about the FEMA reimbursement, which, yes, has been told to us that we will be getting the 75% reimbursement, we've got our project coordinator, that's coming. You have to spend the money first to get reimbursed. It's a time-consuming process to get reimbursed. We're still being reimbursed for storms that occurred five years ago. Other communities have waited seven years for their reimbursement. It is not a quick process, because of the amount of exacting detail that they want with respect to every bill that you submit. Again, that's a question for March, because there are other funding ideas that we're still working through to try and figure out how best to present this to the voters for their consideration. So the answer, in short, is yes. FEMA has committed to the 75% reimbursement once we get to that point. Correct. Of whatever we decide to repair. The repairs in March would be on the order of about $5.5 to $5.6 million.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the upper deck. Gentlemen in the upper deck.
So, the legal sta, Tomney, Thomasney Bay Road, the legal status of the seawall is still a mystery. It's very confusing. It's owned by the state, the town is responsible, but it's on private property. It seems to me that, that it really is owned by the property owner, even though the state may, may somehow say they own it. If it's going to be repaired at town cost, it seems to me that it should be treated as a betterment, the same thing as a sewer, additional sewer line would be. So my question is more for the Finance Director. Could this be treated as a betterment? And if my math is correct, I think we're talking about $10,000 a foot. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's anything that we're dealing with at this point in time. If we're, Mr. Reed is part, Mr. Reed can answer part of the question, but I, but again, if, if we're talking about the, the repair that's going to happen in March, at that, at that point, when that article is before town meeting, then we can talk about total costs and betterments and those sorts of things. But, but please, Mr. Reed.
I'm going to pinch-hit for John, because it's something that he and I have had lengthy discussions about. Betterments, in fact, are part of our overall concept in terms of seeking funding to repair the seawall, for certain portions thereof. Most notably, the revetment work that would occur for the armoring stone across the entire length of it. Again, I don't mean to put the cart before the horse, but when we come before you in March, we're going to be talking about 800 linear feet at a cost of $5.5 million. Additionally, we're going to float the concept of doing armoring stone across the entire length of the wall, not just the 800 feet, but the full 40, 3,800 feet, for which we would assess a betterment. But again, these are all concepts that we're still working through to figure out what the appropriate funding mechanism will be, what the notification process will be, what the public hearing process will be. So those are the concepts that we're working on for that town meeting in the future. Tonight, with this article, to boil it down, it's $65,000 for rocks. The town's going to foot the bill on the labor. We're going to do it in three weeks. That's the idea.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Spellman. I live at 61 Ocean Road North. I have a question for Mr. Reed. Isn't there a $1.5 million environmental bond bill sitting on Governor Baker's desk?
I have been advised that, in fact, yes, there is. And...
It has passed the Senate in the House. Is that correct?
That's correct. What Representative Cutler has told me is that it's up to the discretion of the governor to figure out how we would like to spend that.
But it has passed the Senate in the House, and that would be used for the $65,000 and other expenditures we're going to have. Is that correct?
I beg your pardon?
It's going to be used for this expenditure and other expenditures we're going to have on the seawall.
No. That is not my understanding at all.
Okay. What would it be used for?
I don't know. It remains to be seen. I haven't even had the conversation with Representative Cutler.
And the grant money that we've, we've tried to acquire, what would that be used for?
The grant money that we've applied for is $3 million for the repair of the 800 linear feet that was broken.
Fine. So there is money in the pipeline for these repairs?
No, there are applications that are yet to be approved.
That's correct.
So to say there's money, I don't want to say that, because I don't have, the town has not received any notification of any funding.
But it's not like we're sitting out there with no money. Chances of having any money come to us.
Well, right now, we are. We are sitting out there without any money. That's why we're here, asking people to give us some. We've, we've got applications in wherever we, whatever avenue that we think we can pursue to find funding, we're chasing it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I'm going to call for a vote at this point. This, this article will require a 2/3 vote in order to pass. I think it's pretty straightforward. We haven't made any amendments. It's $65,000 for the purpose of funding temporary repairs. If you're in favor of that, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Voting is now open. The article passes 335 to 86.
Article four, subject stabilization spending seawall peer review. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the purpose of funding engineering peer review related to the plans for the proposed repairs and reconstruction of the Duxbury Beach seawall, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $35,000 from the stabilization fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted unanimously not to recommend this article.
Fernando, were you going to speak to us? Or are you going to, okay. Mr. Flynn?
You've heard the Chair of the Finance Committee say that she hates to spend money out of the stabilization fund. You've heard the town manager say he hates to spend money out of the stabilization fund. Let us join the chorus of selectmen, that we don't like to spend money out of the stabilization fund, and I recommend that we indefinitely postpone Article Four.
For, for those of you who are, who are unfamiliar with, with town meeting action and indefinite postponement, to indefinitely postpone an article means we're, in some towns, they call it pass over that article. You will, we will be voting to not take action on it at this point in time. It's really not yes, it's really not no, it's that we're not going to consider it at this, at this time. A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone. We'll take a vote on it. All those in favor of indefinite postponement will press 1. All those opposed to it will press 2. Voting is now open.
Article number five, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article number five, fund collective bargaining agreements, union contract, Duxbury Police Union, MCOP Local 376B. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $380,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Police Union, MCOP Local 376B, for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016, and ending July 30th, 2019. And to meet this appropriation, transfer $380,000 from the stabilization fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
Before there's further discussion on this article, I want to just point out to the town, to the town meeting, that what was printed in the warrant said that the contract year would be beginning July 1st, 2017. That was a typographical error. It was 2016, as the motion shows. It was always intended to be a three-year contract with an end date of June 30th, 2019. And so the article will move forward, even though it doesn't quite match the original wording in the warrant.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Just a brief note that although this money will be taken from stabilization, when you settle a contract, there is a clock on the town's obligation to settle the contract and fund it. And that clock is certainly not next March. We fully intend to recommend that the funds that are taken from stabilization will be returned to stabilization from free cash at the special within the annual. So this would be a temporary borrowing, if you will, from stabilization, with the intent that we would fund it in our typical fashion, which would be from free cash to settle contract agreements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Are there any questions on this? Any comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Since the money is coming from stabilization, as, as I think you realize at this point, it will take a 2/3 vote for this to pass. All those in favor of funding this collective bargaining agreement will press 1. All those opposed will press 2. Voting is open. The next two articles that we're going to deal with are zoning articles. Both of them are citizens petitions. The first is Article Number Six, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article Six, citizens petition amend zoning bylaws, proposal to add new special permitted use under Section 410 Residential Compatibility District. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
Before we, before we get a presentation from the petitioner, we'll get a report from the, from the planning board.
Article Six regarding the petition to amend the zoning bylaw to add a new special permitted use veterinary hospital under Section 410 Residential Compatibility District. After public hearing held on August 8th of 2018 and closed on that day, the planning board voted 3 to 1 to support the article. Planning board understands that the term veterinary hospital does not include kennels.
Petition, if you'll come forward and introduce yourself and take us through what you'd like to do.
Thank you, and thank God for your patience tonight. I assume most people read what was in the clipper. I put that in to be as brief as possible this evening. But I'm Dr. Dan Hebert. I'm the owner of Duxbury Animal Hospital. For those that didn't read or didn't have a chance to, our basic plan is that we'd like to take the building that we're in, which is currently zoned to be 25% animal hospital, 75% residential, and make it 100% animal hospital. The way it's currently zoned would require a special permit to do so. Three out of the five people on the zoning board that were present the evening felt that it was okay. The other two still feel shackled by some antiquated zoning bylaws that basically didn't take the four-legged family members into account. So we're just looking to update that and just looking for your help to do so. Brief history, this is the clinic as it looked. It was started in 1967. This is how it looked when Bruce Barrett took over in the early '70s. Basically just occupying this basement level right here. He was able to get special permit to add on shortly thereafter. There were some kennels in the kind of dumpier back area that he was able to enclose, and that also included having to build a garage because of that 75-25 rule. So the actual little area here is what was added on. It's roughly a 30% increase in the clinical space. Since that time, the population has grown 300% in the town of Duxbury. Renovations were done, and Bruce and Gina did an amazing job. I think anybody that knows the building knows that. I took it over in 2013, and I haven't changed anything, because it's beautiful. But we are still shackled to the basement. We're still basically in this very small area right here. So that leaves a lot of internal and external problems. The neighbors and I have been talking for the last five years about ways to come up with that. Starting with the internal problems is my poor staff. They currently have no space. This is their break room. It is the boiler room. They were eating their meals on the floor prior and stuffing their coats wherever they could. So we kind of made this, oh, I'm sorry, made this for them. So that is my staff break room. We just want to be able to let them have the space that they deserve, to be able to have personal space. They're getting urinated on, on a regular basis, having clothing torn. I'd like them to be able to take a shower when that happens. We also have issues with a very small waiting room. With only two exam rooms, this waiting room gets very full when we fall behind, when dogs are barking at each other and starting fights, that then backs up to our parking lot. So our neighbors are having to listen to barking dogs. In addition, I said, we only have two waiting rooms. One of those functionally is a hallway from our surgery to our recovery area. Our surgery suite is on the other side of this wall. Recovering patients have to be brought through to the recovery over here. So that room can then get tied up. We can't ethically have people in there as we're bringing recovering patients through. So again, that backup then leads to backup to our very dysfunctional parking lot. Anybody that's been there knows that, especially if there's a delivery truck there, we just can't get the cars in. That leads to backups on the Depot Street, problems with traffic, safety issues, and again, problems for our neighbors, something I really want to remedy. So our plan involves several things. We're going to do it in multiple phases, but the first thing is to move the parking out back. So this gray area, which is the parking, would be moved back to this area behind the building and out of sight from the public. We would have a little delivery entrance to keep the trucks off of Depot Street, and we'd also move the main entrance to the back part of what's going to be a renovated, what was the old garage. This would then be a very residential-looking driveway. We're going to put in a lot more landscaping, so the goal of which being, to the neighbors' request, have the place look like a house in a residential district and have the business kind of shuffled around back. The abutting neighbors have all been worked with for the last two years. We've picked the greenery and fences and such that they like, so I said, it's been about a two-year project to make sure that everybody's happy with that. Externally, again, trying to make it look more like a residence. Our architect drove around for several days, looking at historic buildings with the goal of having this look like rather than a 1950's Cape with some 1980's additions. It's what's, basically want to look like an old farmhouse that's been here for several hundred years. We are taking down the old garage with the necessity that we need to have an elevator. Some of our patients are way more than I do. To get them sick up and downstairs is not possible, and there are clients we'd like to bring up to the second level, which is going to be our inpatient space. It's also going to be our new waiting area and with the new main entrance. So we plan to still have a side entrance. We would like to have a euthanasia room. It's a serious thing for us. We want to be able to have that to be a private, quiet area away from the rest of the, the general space. But people would then no longer be parking out here and moving around to this back area. This is the parking around here, so driving around, coming in new vestibule area. Again, main entrance, parking, much more green space here. And again, we've worked with all the abutters around there. So the design, like I said, we've worked on this for about two years. It's passed through the Design Board unanimously. We've gone through Conservation Commission, planning, three out of five of the zoning. And what we're looking for is basically a change in, like I said, very antiquated zoning bylaws that allow things like hospitals, sanatoriums, assisted living, that kind of stuff. But the zoning felt that because they're antiquated, we need to update it to include veterinary care as well. Like I said, we've been there 51 years. We're just, the space has fallen behind the times of the population. We just want to get to the point where we can actually provide veterinary care to the animals of Duxbury that they deserve. So that, and I'll take any questions.
Mrs. McNabb?
I feel like there's got to be a bunch of questions. First of all, couldn't this be done strictly by special permit without the need to change zoning?
Does somebody have an answer for Mrs. McNabb?
That's an important, that's important for this, and I think for all zoning changes and issues that the town is facing, you really, it's so important to take the personality, take the people out of it. You know, the veterinarian that just got up is, you know, a nice guy. Everybody loves their dogs and cats. We all, you know, love oysters and, you know, all these different personalities play into it. But when it comes to zoning, zoning is forever. Zoning is going to stick. It's going to be there, whether it's an owner that's before you today or someone else in the future. And I think it's really important to try to take the person and the personality out of it and, and really look at it objectively. But... But back to the question, is, could this be done strictly by a special permit?
I'm going to, our Planning Director will, is here to answer that question.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Valerie Massard, Planning Director. The petitioner has submitted and is going through the process of a special permit request with the ZBA, and then was advised during those hearings that the ZBA had questions and doubts about whether the definition of hospital as written in our existing bylaw encompassed the meaning of veterinary hospital. And they encouraged the applicant to consider coming to town meeting with the citizens' petition to correct that flaw so that they would be more attuned in terms of being enabled to thus grant a special permit. When and if that changes, he would have to go back through for a special permit application. He has withdrawn his current request because of the feedback he received during the special permit process from the ZBA.
Thank you.
Other question, upper level on the right.
It's more of a statement than a question. Marble, Men 84 Depot Street, and I live diagonally across the street from the animal hospital. And I just, I want to appeal tonight to all of you. This is not, I'm not, not in support of the animal hospital. I love animals, and I think they do a terrific job, but I think we need to be clear here about what's being asked. He's asking to change a residential property into a full commercial property within a neighborhood. And I think if you're comfortable with that happening in your neighborhood, then you can vote for this, but I'm not comfortable with that happening in my neighborhood. I moved to a residential district. I purchased my home there, and I feel like this would definitely affect the value of my home, the traffic. It's already, Dr. Beridge was there for 50 years. This is a new practice within the last five years, and we've seen traffic increase, we've seen lighting and signage increase, and I'm sure they do a wonderful job, and I am in support of them staying as they are, but completely raising the property and going full commercial. I just, I just don't see that as a good thing for Duxbury and a good thing for our zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, our Planning Director has a comment, and then we'll get to you. Is that Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We'll get to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Briefly, what the question before Town Meeting is asking is that we allow for the process of a special permit application for a veterinary hospital in a residential compatibility district, just as we now allow for anyone in the residential compatibility district to ask for a special permit for such things as a sanatorium or other uses. There are several uses that are allowed by special permit in the residential compatibility district. So Mr. Hebert would be subject to, as anyone else would be, a special permit request. He's not at this meeting asking you to rezone his property. He's, he is asking Town Meeting to change the zoning to allow a process to be enabled for him to apply for a special permit to make changes to his property.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, and then we'll, we'll come back down here in the far right.
There's always a temptation to try to simplify, especially at Town Meeting, but to not do that, it's important to point out, and I think the Planning Director has tried to point it out, zoning bylaws are limited. They're not all things to all people. They can't be morphed into whatever we want them to be. But unfortunately, oftentimes, there aren't any other options. I believe that the doctor has tried the other options that are available and found out that those avenues were closed to him, and this is the only avenue open. Duxbury, as we know, has one of the most restrictive and one of the toughest zoning bylaws in the state, and for years had one of the toughest zoning bylaws in the state, Mr. Lampert. And we thank you for that. Duxbury looks the way it does, and not like Quincy or other towns, because we do want to preserve. But every town, even Duxbury, which we, in the zoning community, refer to as Plymouth Plantation, has to adapt and allow things for its citizens. One of the things that makes us a community are stores and shops and places for our kids to play. Another one, and it's one of those ones that you only know when you're putting down an animal or someone that you love probably more than your children, wife or husband, is very sick, and that's our dogs, cats, and animals. This is the only option there is because our zoning bylaw doesn't consider an animal hospital a hospital. An animal hospital, they wear white coats, they take care of patients, they go to medical school, there are nurses on duty, there are surgical equipment. It is a hospital. And whether or not Little Maggie is the same as Big Maggie doesn't really matter to most of us, because if this animal hospital has to leave Duxbury because there's no place to accommodate it, it's going to be difficult. We see that all the time in town when we want to go to a movie or even have a funeral or a wedding in town. But this is a use that's already there. It's already accepted. It's already appreciated. The doctor has done everything he can to be a member of our community. And I just find myself thinking back to when I was one of the people who ran the Duxbury Business Association, and I was told that Duxbury wasn't business-friendly. We've gotten a lot better, but this is someone who we should keep and embrace and thank for being in our town, and please, let's not drive him out. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the back of the room, and then Mr. Lampert up here in the front.
Eve Penoyer, 59, Tussock Brook Road. I am not a pet owner, but I have a lot of friends who are pet owners, and I have to say, I'm inclined to come out in support of this article. I'm particularly impressed by the doctor's efforts to make this as residential-looking as possible, to work with the neighbors in a cooperative way and to make sure that they're happy. And I frankly think it's a lovely plan. But I would like some clarification, and I think that Town Meeting would benefit from hearing a more extensive reading of the list of what are the other residential compatibility uses that already are on the list. We've heard mention of hospitals, but could you give us a more thorough reading of the other kinds of uses, the other 11, say, uses that are already part of the bylaw so that Town Meeting can get a sense about how this would fit into the whole?
And I sense our Planning Director is working her way to the microphone, and will give you that information.
Okay. You sensed correctly, Mr. Moderator. The uses permitted by special permit in the residential compatibility district, I believe, there are 11. Stand for sale of produce raised on the premises. Home occupation in accordance with Section 410.7. Number three, conversion of a single-family dwelling and existence for 10 years prior to the application for a special permit in accordance with Section 410.6, which is relative to, just to make it clear, an accessory apartment. Number four, cemetery. Number five, golf course. Number six, which is where we're getting stuck in the special permit application process, reads, "Hospital, convalescent home, sanatorium, institution, including a continuing care or similar assisted living retirement facility for persons age 62 and over operated in connection with a skilled nursing facility subject to state licensure. Any such use to be reviewed pursuant to the applicable provisions of Article 800 of the Protective Bylaw or philanthropic use." Number seven, riding stable. Number eight, a bed and breakfast with existing footprint of an existing single-family dwelling in which the operator resides. Number nine, a private club not conducted for profit and not containing sleeping quarters for more than four persons. Number 10, a residential conservation cluster development. And number 11, a wireless telecommunications services facility.
Mr. Lampert?
Jim Lampert, 148 Washington Street, and I spent about 15 years on the zoning board. I think one thing Val actually did, pointed it out, there are a lot of what you would call general, quote, "commercial," close quote, uses permitted in the residential compatibility districts by special permit, which everybody is focused on. You have to convince the board that a special permit could be granted. What happened in this case, as I understand it, was Dr. Hebert went in and asked for a special permit, and the closest thing, and you heard Val read the list, was hospitals. And it went on with a lot of stuff, like sanatoriums, assisted care units, et cetera. And the question that the board was facing was whether hospitals meant hospitals only for people. It takes four votes out of the five on the zoning board to approve a special permit. Two of the members of the zoning board, and my understanding is it was some fairly old case law, were uncomfortable with taking a position that a hospital included a hospital for pets. And to be perfectly clear, I've had my dog up there quite a lot recently. And the reason that we're here tonight is to ask whether, if we're going to permit big people hospitals in residential compatibility districts by special permit, particularly given the history of how long we've had a veterinary hospital there, should we avoid having to fight about whether my dog is a person and me an extended care and simply come up with a clean provision that says, yes, you can have a veterinary hospital. We're not only limited to people hospitals.
Thank you. Woman in the, my, my right on the second deck.
Hi, Laney Matkowski, 267 King Caesar Road. I just wanted to ask about, in Dr. Hebert's letter, he wrote, he didn't have any plans to alter the service. But if he were to sell the practice 20 years from now, or however many years, will there be wording within the permit so that things like 24-hour emergency service, or overnight care, or grooming boarding, or large animals, any of those types of things that he is currently not doing, will that, there be wording in that so that the next vet will also follow that?
Ms. Massard, I suggest you not get too comfortable in between questions. I have a feeling you're going to be there a lot.
We'll stay close to the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In answer to that specific question, the Zoning Board of Appeals, in deliberations, had already set up a set of conditions similar to what you're describing, and yes, the ZBA would impose such conditions, which is why the special permit process is something that Duxbury holds close to its heart in order to be able to carefully prescribe what happens when a special permit is granted and also has so many special permit uses in the town. I had a follow-up, but I've lost, I've lost it. So if it comes back to me, I'll re-approach.
Please feel free to share. Any other questions?
I know, remember.
Time to share.
I apologize, but I do remember our Zoning Board of Appeals is, as Mr. Lampert pointed out, and as Mr. Cook pointed out, very conservative, and that's the goal and intent of the bylaw here in Duxbury. They are proceeding with caution, and they often, as part of that role, prescribe in their special permits that the special permit itself has to be revisited if there's a new owner of the property or a new user of the potential site, as is. And so I would expect that in this case, because of the types of questions that are being fielded here this evening, that they would again impose such a condition.
Ms. Lampert?
Mary Lampert, 148 Washington Street. Before you vote, and I think this will wrap it up, a quick little vignette. In the morning, I come downstairs, and I say, "Good morning, honey." And Jim says, "Good morning." I said, "Not you," which points out the fact that in reality, our animals are people to us, and it seems that we should be able to take them in our town and that our town should provide a full service for our furry people as opposed to having to go to Angel Memorial or someplace else, because there is not the space to deal with all the animals that are here in town. So think of "good morning, honey" when you give a vote.
Indeed, I believe you have wrapped it up. I think I'm going to call for a vote at this point. Pretty straightforward. If you're in favor of adding this as a use, you want to vote for it. If you're opposed, you want to vote against it. It will take a two-thirds vote to pass. Voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. We now come, we now come to the final article of the night, which is another citizens' petition dealing with zoning, Article Number Seven.
Article Seven, Subject Citizens Petition: Amend Zoning Bylaws; Proposal to Establish a Neighborhood Business Light Zoning District. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as presented in the warrant with the following changes that will be presented by the petitioner.
Second.
Finance Committee voted six, zero, and one abstain to recommend.
And I will add, the Board of Selectmen recommended this article as well, three, nothing. We have a report from the Planning Board.
Cynthia Lad, Fiorelli from the Planning Board. Article Seven, Petition to Create New Zoning District Neighborhood Business Light and to Rezone Two Parcels of Land, is shown in the petition. After public hearing held on August eighth and continued to August 22nd of 2018 and closed on that date, the Planning Board voted four to two to support the article as amended on Town Meeting floor as proposed.
Presenting the article and the information on the amended is Mr. Sherman.
I'm actually just going to address the amendments right now. Chris Sherman, President of Island Creek Oysters, 942 Tremont Street. So there's actually, I should say, there's a packet outside on the table. If you have not grabbed it and are interested in detailed information on the actual amendments, you can find them in that packet. But to go through them, and I will say also that these amendments were made not as, you know, changing the spirit of the article. They were made simply because of the procedural aspect of having to put the article in place before receiving any feedback from town boards and committees. So these changes were made, some were typos, some were more substantive, but they were made largely on feedback that we received from the town committees. So change number one is in, and these are all changes in the zoning bylaw. This is in Section 202.1. We changed the word in number 12. Neighborhood business district light may only be located where the district is adjoining an existing NV1 or NV2 district through a common district boundary line. We changed that word, it was formerly adjacent, and we changed it to adjoining at the suggestion of someone at the Planning Board meeting to be more precise in our language to suggest what we had originally intended, which was it has to be touching a property that's currently zoned commercial, not just in the general proximity of. The second change is Section 420. The town shall have two designated neighborhood business districts. It was changed to the town shall have designated neighborhood business districts, because there would, if this were to pass, then be three, and that was something that did not make it through the first draft of this language. Proceeding to Section 421A dot two, now this is in the proposed language of Neighborhood Business District Light, again, at the behest of, or I should say... District Light, again at the behest of, or I should say, at the suggestion of a member of the Planning Board, we added in language at bullet point number three that says, "In NV Light, no drive-through establishment, drive-through business, or drive-through restaurant use shall be allowed." And our feeling was that this was a measure to take to, A, eliminate drive-throughs, obviously, but also to preclude, like, large national restaurant chains, you know, the worst-case scenario, people thinking, like, a McDonald's or Starbucks or something going in, this would preclude them from ever entering the area. And there are two more changes. Number four is 421.4, Special Permit Uses, much in the spirit of the last discussion about the last article, almost all the uses that have to go into commercial zoning in Duxbury have to go through a special permit process. So these are the uses in NV1 that are not prohibited and can be used, can be achieved through a special permit process. We originally approached Planning Board and had Number 9, which is in the current bylaw for NV1, which was contractors and service establishments, so carpentry shop with trucks and things like that. And we struck that in the spirit of trying to make NV Light even lighter, to be more appropriate for what the Plan Board felt the zoning should be. And then finally, another typo, Number 5 in 421.4, our original language for the article had mistakenly omitted the much-beloved mortuary and funeral parlor, special permit uses, but it was suggested that we add that back in. And that concludes the summary of the changes to the article that have occurred since it was initially put on the warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Skip Bennett, 11 White Street, and I am the owner of Island Creek Oysters. As many of you probably know, back in November, we purchased the former Batel site located on Washington Street, an 11-acre parcel that is now our headquarters. With that, we kind of inherited a really unorthodox property that was, Batel had essentially built a commercial property on a residentially-zoned piece of land, and they did this under the auspice of their nonprofit designation. So we've worked diligently to try to figure out the best use for the property that we haven't, that we didn't really particularly need. We looked at residential development there, but we, you know, the overwhelming response was that people wanted us to keep the property, much as it has been for the last 50 years. So we came to Town Meeting in March and asked to rezone the property, NV1, so that it could be used much in the way that it has been used in the past. Through that process, one thing that kind of rose to the top was that these two historic homes on Washington Street were very, very sensitive, and that the historical nature of the houses, along with the fact that, you know, Washington Street has this street facade that is very important to the town, you know, we recognized that adding this to the NV1 was probably not the best move at that time. So along with the recommendation of the Planning Board, and Val Massard, and the ZBA, we came to the agreement that we would take it out and take some time, put our heads together, and see if we could come up with a resolve for these buildings, that they're beautiful historic homes, but they've been converted to offices. We've looked at a lot of different options for these houses, and, you know, coincidentally, we always kind of come back to the fact that the way that they've been used for the past 50 years is probably the most appropriate use for those buildings. So the yellow house, the Bridge House, we have a potential buyer if we can rezone this property, NV1. I'll let Chris talk about the details of NV1 and how that would preserve the homes and the street facade. John Mark is going to talk about if he is able to purchase the property, what that would look like. But thank you all for considering this. It's been a collaboration with a lot of the town boards, and, you know, I think it's a, may not be perfect, but I don't know that there's a perfect solution for that property. And it really checks all the boxes of, you know, keeping those homes, you know, the appearance of the home, the facade on the street intact. So thank you for your consideration.
Again, I should say. I want to thank you all for coming out. You have busy lives, and it's a Thursday in September, and it is, at least by my standards, late in the evening. I have a tremendous respect for all of the town boards and committees that, which meet late in the evening. They have tried my own endurance, so I have a lot of, I'm very grateful for their hard work on all of these weeknights. So Skip did a great job kind of providing the framework for the problem. We have a bunch of office buildings, or two, I should say, on two separate parcels along the Washington Street streetscape on our property, and we're trying to figure out a way to use them, as we have figured out a way to use the rest of the property, as the use for which they have been retrofitted, going on many decades ago. The problem we encountered was twofold, to be specific, on the sensitivity of the Washington Street facade. One is the historic value of the homes. One in particular, the Richards House, the one we intend to keep, is the first Nathaniel Windsor House, the precursor to the Grand Yellow House at the corner of Maticheezet in Washington, which now houses the Historic Society. The other is the Bridge House, built by Edgar Reed, a manufacturer from the Worcester area. The other kind of sensitive point was density. How do we prevent, if we preserve the history of these homes and structures, how do we prevent for other buildings from popping up next to them? You'll hear, I'm sure, from one or two people tonight, concern that we could create a strip mall or some sort of, you know, undesirable commercial landscape on Washington Street. And I assure you, something that we've gone to great lengths within this framework to eliminate the possibility of occurring. So that's really the problems that we were kind of told to address when we went back to the drawing board after the first go-around to try to solve this problem. And just to reiterate the problem, we inherited the property, you know, the problem from Batel, but we also came at the end of a long series of failed attempts to figure out what to do with this entire property. There was a university that wanted to come in and put undergraduate housing and other types of space in these buildings. There was a condo development. There was a planned unit, you know, by right, single-family subdivision, which filed demolition permits for these homes, because that's the path of least resistance to solve this problem. But we are committed, insofar as, you know, as reasonably possible, to solving this problem through other means, by achieving these goals of protecting our beloved Washington Street facade and the historic value of those homes, while also putting sustainable uses in them, which will bring them back to life, rather than letting them remain dormant. That's kind of why we're here, and why we think this is a good idea. So the mechanisms we've identified to solve these problems are twofold. One is we have made a promise to the town that if this article passes, we will immediately act, and any of our assigns, buyers, anything if we die or anything happens, will have to act in accordance, and as though these properties are already in a local historic district. Jonathan Mark from Waterfront Realty, the proposed buyer for the Bridge House, has also signed that agreement. And the agreement then sets up the scenario where we will be back here, the Town Meeting's becoming a habit, it seems, but we will be back here in March to finalize the placement of those homes into a local historic district, so that any material changes to the exterior of those buildings, any aesthetic changes that you'd notice as you're driving down the street, would have to go through a review process and be approved by the local historic district. And that lives with the property in perpetuity. We feel very strongly that this agreement is strong. Jonathan has already engaged with the local historic district and gotten favorable response to his proposed design and amendments. And we feel that this is something that has to be done. We initially proposed this when we wanted the properties to be in with the rest of the parcels in NV1 behind them. The other, and the meat of what we're talking about now, is a new zoning bylaw in Duxbury, a new zoning district called NV Light. And this arose because, really directly out of our experience last year, where we were not interested in, we're not developers, we're oyster farmers, we're not interested in building up the density and new buildings on this property. One of our, I think Achilles' heel in this process is we don't have, for our buildings, we don't have 3D renderings of new buildings we're going to build, and all kinds of models and things like that, because we're not building anything, we're literally just trying to use these buildings for what they were built for. So we would have been very open to zoning these properties in a lighter commercial district, but Duxbury only has two zoning districts, NV1 and NV2, and they both allow for quite a bit of types of uses that many people find to be incompatible with close, you know, neighboring residential, and with the character of the town. The other problem with it is the density. The commercial zoning allows for many more buildings to be built on a parcel of land and pavement to be put in than the residential code does. So you have this kind of buildup that occurs with commercial zoning. Those are really the things we were trying to address with this NV Light. The, really through doing that, what we think we've done, and you'll hear, you know, we've heard dissent talking about, you know, this will create commercial creep in Duxbury, and we'll have an increase in commercial properties because of this, and I think it's quite the contrary. It de-risks what is currently a highly leveraged situation, either full commercial zoning or residential, and there's no in-between, there's no buffer zone. So now, any of the properties which could feasibly go into this district would have to go through a two-thirds Town Meeting vote, the same exact vote that they would have to go through now to get into NV1. If they went to Town Meeting right now, they would have to go into NV1 if they had a burning desire to turn their residential property into commercial. This allows them, it sets the same high bar of a two-thirds Town Meeting vote, but it allows them to create a kind of buffer, and it provides an opportunity for some of these sticky commercial properties around town that are zoned residential to actually become productive properties for the community. And so that's really where we felt like this is applicable not just to these two properties, but it's applicable to other properties around town. This is something that also eliminates what is now a very risky situation, where someone could come and get that two-thirds vote, and be wherever they wanted, and change their property to commercial. One of the other provisions we've added in here, and you heard me talk about it in the rundown of the changes that we made, was to ensure that this zoning could only apply to properties that are already touching another commercial zone. So the other thing we think about when we think, is this good for the town, not just for these properties and for our zoning bylaws, is does it then open Pandora's Box? Is there 250 properties around town that all of a sudden could come to Town Meeting in March or next year or what have you, and rezone their property into commercial? And because of that criteria, saying that it has to be a 30,000-acre lot that is touching an existing commercial district, you only end up with a handful of properties around town. By our estimation, just over 10 to 12 properties. So we have a scenario where there's properties this could apply to, there's some that I think, you know, probably it would be a good solution to a problem, but it does not open up a giant can of worms that we can't then shut. So we feel as though this is something that the town needs, our bylaws need, and is not just applicable to these properties. However, you know, we are here as owners of those two properties, so we want to solve the problem of the two Washington Street historic structures. And how this article addresses that, and why it's a good idea, are the MOU that puts it into historic district. We address the density concerns by creating large buffers, 25 in the front, 15 on the sides and the rear, which then reduces the amount, not only prevents any sort of building from ever being constructed very close to the road in a kind of commercial-style strip mall setting, but also reduces the amount of buildable square footage of the lot, so that with a 50% coverage, you then can build not a lot of actual additional structure on any of these lots, once you have pavement and a building up. So to put it in perspective, as it exists right now, the Bridge House, which Waterfront Realty is proposed to buy, currently occupies like 37% of the lot with the existing structure and the proposed parking. So there would be just a couple thousand square feet, enough to build a tool shed or some sort of auxiliary structure on the property, but not enough to actually, to say, erect a new commercial building next to it and create some sort of stacked-up scenario where, you know, you have the dreaded strip mall, or really even just another building that has a store or something in it. So through those buffers, we've really reduced that kind of density and buildup concern that we all had. And, you know, I think the other thing that everyone wanted to hear from us was, you know, about these properties, was come back with specific ideas for what these can become. For us, we want to retain ownership of the Richards House, which is the federal style on the side. If you look at the diagram above, it is the purple spot on the top, on the left, as you drive in, we'll maintain that. It's our hope, the most cost-effective way we have to rehab that building is to use it for what it is, which are offices, that we could rent or use ourselves, very much in the vein of what, like a Sweetser's or something like that, right down the street is doing already, for professionals and other light use. And then the property that Jonathan has proposed to buy is below that, and it is on the right, the big yellow house, when you're entering our property on Washington Street. So the impetus for being here at the special Town Meeting, and, you know, directly following the Town Meeting, which re-zoned the rest of the property, was that the specific use presented itself. So I'll let Jonathan spend just a couple minutes, we've already taken enough of your time, reviewing with you the specific idea that he has for the design of the Bridge House, which is the one to be sold.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
I am Jonathan Mark, 17 Sangar Road, Duxbury. Broker-owner, Waterfront Realty Group here in Duxbury. I grew up in town, and Waterfront has been in business for about six years. We're currently located next to Far Far's at 272 St. George Street, and we've outgrown our current location. Our plans are to completely renovate the existing building at 397 Washington, the Victorian on the right when you enter the ICO campus across from the Windsor House. The plan includes removing all the aluminum siding, the existing overgrown bushes, shrubs, and bring it back to its original historic look, which I've researched at the archives at the Historic Society. Bring it back to its cedar siding that it used to have, restoring the 18 over 2 and 16 over 2 windows, and other historic features that have been removed, covered up, or altered from the building. So we plan to have our office on the first floor, and two, two-bedroom apartments on the second and third. There is a need for apartments in town as well, that's why we're doing that. We don't have the need for the entire building for our office. The plan has been endorsed by the Historic Committee, they have visited the site. The memorandum of understanding also makes us work with the Historic Commission until the March Town Meeting, until the building is actually placed into the historic district. And also, just to touch base on the historic use and real estate perspective, it's important to realize that both the buildings on Washington Street have been used for over 40 years as offices already. The buildings have been significantly altered and no longer resemble residences inside. Both buildings are surrounded by the commercial and public use buildings presently. It's, it should be known, too, that both buildings are currently zoned as residential, and if they are sold as that, after a six-month historic delay, could be demolished. Our plan saves the buildings. Our plan saves the buildings. Something else to consider from a real estate perspective, since that's the business that I'm in, is you've got to consider who buys a 3,500 to 4,000 square foot house typically? It's a family, not usually a downsizer or someone like that. Many families don't, rather live in like a cul-de-sac or are not really on a main road, a lot of them. But furthermore, if they abut a commercial district in multiple, multiple sides of the property, it just doesn't make for a prime residential option. So I think this, our plan, we don't see it being a feasible option to keep them just strictly residential, and thank you very much.
I think the last thing I'd add as a point of clarification is that these are two separate properties. They will remain separate properties, and there's a right-of-way that goes in between them. And we've been told that it is preferable from the fire department and from a number of kind of usability, parking, access concerns to maintain that right-of-way, and it will be retained on the deed. So the byproduct of that right-of-way and the fact that these are two separate lots means that they cannot be combined to create some sort of a large commercial lot that could be a strip mall or some sort of, you know, commercial development along Washington, even if the density were to somehow work out so that you could achieve something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll open it up for questions now. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Moderator. John Bear, 102 Tuxak Brook. Been in town for about 30 years, I guess, and on the planning board for just almost 20. And was one of the minority negative recommenders of this proposal. A number of issues, but the whole discussion has been about saving houses. And just to kind of clear things up a little bit from the planning perspective, we don't zone houses, we zone lots. And we don't zone people. We have some very nice people here, as they were last year, too. And we're quite liberal and are ruling with them, that made it easy for them to move in and operate their business, which we do call a farm, but in fact, as most of you probably know, it primarily is a marketing and distribution company, distributing other people's product and farm product. But it is a business, it is a company, and they paid a bunch of money for that property, and they want to get the best use of it and get some of their money back, I'm sure. And I don't blame them for doing that, and they're very nice people, no question about that. I think when people voted last year for that change, they thought they were saving these houses as residences. I don't think they thought they were going to save them to be new business offices, which is what they're doing. And I do have to go back a little bit, and was just mentioned by the Realtor, that suddenly Washington Street is not a desirable place to bring up children, but it seems that people like it a lot, and there's some very big houses on there, and most of the recent resales have been in excess of a million, and a recent one was even 4 million. So I think people like to live on Washington Street, and they like the big houses that are there for the most part. So I would kind of dismiss that part of the argument. But anyway, back to the basics as to whether this is a good idea or not. General one is we should not do our zoning bylaw changes on the fly. When we came out of last year's annual town meeting, we made an adjustment to a piece of property to help a local business, and that was a good thing, and it seems to have worked out for them, and they're doing, increasingly moving their folks in there and getting new functions in there and using existing buildings. But when we set this aside, I think the intention was to have people living in those houses, have them fixed up as houses, and continue that way. When you, when you apply to change the zoning itself, you attach that to the property, and that goes on forever until we change the zoning. But the next person who comes in, and Island Creek could be sold, they could move to another town, anything could happen down the road, but when their property is sold again, that zoning remains with the property. They don't take it with them, they don't have it when they move in. So we have to be very careful, we're just not doing this for a special situation. And when we saw this change come in and the markups in each hearing we had, we're done on the fly, and so we didn't say, "How about this?", and say, "Okay, write that one in", and you didn't really have a clear look at it. And while we like the concept of some of the changes, which are really updating neighborhood business one, then, or two, neighborhood business one primarily, then much of the other things in there really don't do anything. We're not giving away anything by saying we won't do bus stops or mortuary areas there. We don't have any in any of our business districts anyhow. So that's not a big argument for it. But, and we're, some discussion about density, and while we mentioned the setbacks that this new zone would have, which are greater than NB1 setbacks, should point out that they still carry through with, they don't have to have any setback or distance between new buildings. Those numbers are zeros, both in the back and on the sides. A new building can go on that property, attached to the back of the present building, and a new building can be attached to that building next to it with zero distance between them. Think of, think of the stores and shops and services that you see along Marshall Street. They're, they're standard, rather, along Standard Street, they're all zero lot lines, no room, no spaces between them. And you could do that in the back of this property if you wanted to, if it became business owned. So, those are some of the considerations I think you should keep in mind, that it is the property that's changing, not just, you know, we love the people and we'd like to be nice to them. We shouldn't be downzoning lots that are in the Washington Street area for the potential benefit of a single, like the Realtor, like a single person to benefit from it. Zoning is a town-wide idea. It's not meant to be one-for-one, a zone for this person and a zone for that person. And this is, at the time, being set up specifically for one particular business to make a change and sell off some property. And that's not how zoning bylaws are supposed to be changed. The dirty word comes up, a "spot zoning", make it small s, small z, but it's, this is a type of spot zoning that we're doing if we pass this. I talked about not doing it on the fly. At the last town meeting, when we approved the downzoning of the Batel property to Neighborhood Business One, and Island Creek Oysters committed to preserving the residences on Washington Street, the two of them, and also presenting a master plan for the property because that property was rezoned without a master plan for its development, which would normally be required. And I think we still have not seen that master plan, and the actions to actually get the buildings under the protection of the historical restrictions weren't undertaken right at that time either. So we don't have that. I think that's the essence of the things I wanted to comment on, just to point out that we are rezoning property when we do this, and we're opening up a new zoning section and description, which normally would be done over a year of study and research and checking other towns to see how they made a different light kind of concept, they are some that are around. But we shouldn't be doing it on the fly, and we shouldn't be doing it to support just one business. Thank you.
Thank you. Take this gentleman back here on the right, and then we'll come over here to the left.
Ozzy Saab, 357 Temple Street. I have a question in regards to Section 425.1. There seems to be some discrepancy between 1 and 2, and then 3 and 4. It says that there should be a minimum of 30,000 square feet, but the frontage in depth are the amount of 20,000. And the same thing with 3 and 4, 15,000 versus 10,000.
I'd probably defer to the planning director for the specifics. I would say my, my layman's opinion, but as someone who participated in the process of creating this, obviously, is that it's an "and" scenario, not an "or" scenario. So you couldn't just use the, the minimum frontage requirement to then create a lot. It would also have to be at least 30,000 square feet.
We have, we're following, if you, if you look at the language that's in 425.1, for NB1 and NB2, they set the minimum lot size, and then they set the lot dimensions. The same format is being used for this proposed new Neighborhood Business Lite, where they set the lot size, and then they set the lot dimensions. It's both. They have to meet both.
Does that answer your question?
No, not really. I mean, if you have a minimum of 30,000, how can you come up with 20,000 as being okay?
So, to have an NB Lite, the lot size would be 30,000 square feet, and it would have to have 200 feet of frontage, which is larger than what an NB1 zone would require. So NB1, you could have a smaller lot with lesser frontage. The intent, I think, here was to create a harder situation to find a lot that would fit these limitations and be adjacent to or adjoining an existing business district.
Thank you. Gentlemen over here, on the bottom.
Good evening. Darren Humphreys, 22 Windsor Street. My home directly abuts Island Creek's property to the southern border, and my wife and I purchased the home roughly a year prior to Island Creek's purchase. And so we've watched with very keen interest the developments across the yards from us. We have been delighted with Island Creek thus far. I will say that they have been very collaborative, they've been very transparent, and in fact, they've been very good communicators to us and to all of our adjacent neighbors. So, I commend them for that. We bought our home as a generational home. We'll raise our two infant boys there and settle down in Duxbury. And the reason I invoke this is because as we consider NB Lite, I think that we need to look at this development through a generational prism. I think that any changes that we consider and contemplate now should be looked at in that way. NB Lite, I believe, is a workable solution. I think, I commend Island Creek again, and Waterfront Realty now, in their aim of building along the strip or potentially changing the nature of the strip. I do have one concern, though, and that is some of the uses that are allowed under NB Lite. A couple of them, which I'm going to address, are only available by special permit, but as we've seen, special, here this evening, special permit, two-thirds vote required, can be overturned with some ease. And those two considerations are ones that I think will impact not only our quality of life potentially, but Washington Street itself and people looking across at that strip of land from, towards Island Creek. And that packet that was handed out earlier today has a provision under 421A4. And Items Number 7 and 8 allow for, seven, a restaurant and other places for the serving of food or beverages inside or outside the building, at tables or counters, et cetera. And Item Number 8 is for takeout food establishments or delicatessen where food is prepared but not consumed on the premises and sold retail, catering services, too. Coming back to that quality of life consideration, we are, once again, happy with the NB Lite. We, it was our initial understanding, and we were in the hope that the use would be for many businesses that would utilize it during the week and not impact that much out of hours and certainly not of a weekend when we were trying to enjoy the full use of our property. So I'd like to make a proposed amendment, is what I've been coming to in a long-winded fashion, to strike 421A4, Number 7 and 8, such that NB Lite does not offer special permit use pertaining to restaurants, takeout food, et cetera, and the items included under those two. And just to put a finer point on that, you know, we are keen not to have increased usage, you know, other odor pollution, et cetera. And I think what we've heard-
If I could, you're making that as an amendment to strike those two items. Do I have a second for that? Second, all right, please go ahead.
Sorry, and just the final point I wanted to make is, to put a finer point on that, it would seem from everything we've heard that, given that much of it is going to be placed in a historical district and much of it isn't intended to be a strip mall, that that should not be problematic. So, I'm hoping we get support for that. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Moderator.
Please, we'll ask the planning director for a comment on that.
This is where team planning comes into play. And, and Mr. Casa Grande, I handed him a copy of the proposed amendment, which thankfully this gentleman here had given me a heads-up on. And we're realizing that we need to, if we make this amendment, also include that those, rather than striking them entirely, they are lifted and moved to Section 421.4, which would take them back into the special permit uses under NB1.
Would you, could you do that again, please?
Yes. If, this is a friendly amendment to the proposed amendment. Take Items Number 7 and 8 from Section 421A.4, and move those to become Items 5 and 6 under Section 421.4, essentially restoring them to our existing NB1 language. We are. Yes. So, what we're doing, if I may, Mr. Moderator.
Please.
Think of this as a double decker, you have a double burger today. You have NB1 and NB... Okay. But I think in pictures, so I have to use an analogy that works for me. And, so you have a double burger, NB1 and NB2. NB1 at the bottom, so you have so many uses, and then NB2 is more intense uses. So if you're in the Neighborhood Business District 1, there's so many things we allow, and if you're NB2, it's a little more like engines and things like that. What we're proposing here is that by inserting a third burger at the bottom, NB Lite, we're taking all the uses that we normally have in the NB1 district, and they've been moved into NB Lite, striking out several. So one of the things that's gone altogether is the video store, rental stores, but mortuary and funeral parlor exists now in NB1 and would stay there. But what we've done in the language in NB- But what we've done in the language in NB1 is taken those uses and put them in the bottom burger for NB light so that they carry forward. Our zoning takes you from the lightest to the heaviest. So the first layer is NB light, second layer would be NB1, third layer would be NB2. So we had to move those uses. We didn't create any new uses. We just are moving them around. That's what's being proposed. Yes, it's exactly what's being proposed. If we... Yeah, so... Of course.
Mr. Shan, would you...
Emmett Shan, Powder Point Avenue. I've just gotten a bit confused. I support what Island Creek is trying to do without taking any rights out of existing commercial property owners. That we weren't aware of all of these ramifications until some of them now.
Okay, Scott Casa Grande, 500 Washington Street, also Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm going to take another stab at it. I know it's a little bit confusing, obviously. NB light, I'll take it from the other direction. We have business uses that are allowable in the residential district, which we went over some of those earlier with the veterinary and all those uses. NB light would then be coming in next. And in this bylaw, as proposed, this change, the citizen's petition, they've basically grabbed the lightest of the NB1 uses that we already have and moved them into NB light. Didn't take all of the NB1 uses because some of those we don't want, which is the proposal that has just been made, amendment proposal that has just been made, would be to move two of the uses we were going to move into NB light and remove them, were his words, to strike them. However, if we strike them entirely and then we pass this bylaw as written with those struck, we would not allow a restaurant in the town at all anymore. So what we want to do is, we can remove them from NB light. That's fine, because we want to make NB light as light as we can. We've been working on that. There's a number of things in NB1 that stay in NB1 and won't be allowed in NB light. So if we strike 7 and 8, the restaurants and the takeout food, from NB light as proposed here, we need to make sure we reinsert them in 421.4, special permitted uses. And 421.4 deals with NB1. So we want to make sure we don't lose those entirely out of our zoning. Yes. So that's why I would hope we can have an amendment to your amendment, that you would accept that, that we take those that you would like removed and put them back to where they were before.
So you'll accept that as a friendly amendment? Sir?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Okay, so what would be allowed, was just a question raised.
Please.
In NB light. NB light, let me get back here to the beginning. NB light would allow for any uses that are allowed in the residential district. You could still have a residence. You could have any of the special permit uses in the residential district in NB light, just like you could have in NB1 or NB2 now. That's nothing new. And then added to NB light, we've moved up the Neighborhood Business District 1 uses that are by right, which is offices, et cetera, that have less than three spaces. Three parking spaces necessary for them. So those automatically move out. No more than three spaces. Those move out of NB1 and into NB light. And then further to that, in NB light, we take from... Everything we're putting in there, we're taking from NB1. We're not adding anything new. We're just taking from NB1, moving it into NB light, and then leaving the things that are too heavy for NB light and leaving those in NB1. The things that would be left in NB light, besides the ones already mentioned, would be retail sale of food items. Everything you see here under 421A4, special permit uses, again by special permit. All of those uses there that used to be in NB1 are moved up into NB light. Again, it's what you'd consider the lightest of the NB1 uses.
I want to also, so I'll read it. Is that helpful or no? Okay. I will point out that we are also prohibiting, when you take those uses into NB light, any drive-through establishments whatsoever.
Go ahead, Mrs. Sullivan.
This is getting kind of silly. I'd like to speak against the amendment. Not that I would ever want to interrupt your, you know, family time or have something that would be invasive, but I think that the fact that they're special permits, so the fact if there was a sandwich shop that was open for lunch to buy a sandwich, then that, the special permit could establish, correct me if I'm wrong, hours, whether they could be outside or inside and be sensitive to the neighborhood. So if that was going to be a special permit that was being granted, you would have the opportunity, as would your neighbors, and, you know, I live right down the street as well, to kind of contribute to the limited hours or what would be considered a good neighbor. I always get really nervous when we start crafting zoning on town meeting floor because it is a very difficult challenge. So now, not that I'd say take it or leave it, but take it or leave it. This is, you start moving around and taking one from column A and putting one from column B. I have a feeling that it's going to be a mess by the end of it.
Mr. Lampert.
Jim Lampert, 148 Washington Street. I think we're back in the never-ever land of why this zoning bylaw is already a mess and we're doing very, very little to make it any better. This importing everything up makes it practically impossible for anybody who is reading it to go back simply and decide, okay, here's where I am and what can I do? You look at this set of zoning bylaws, for example, you know, there are a couple of special permit sections. And I'm now on page, I guess, 8 of the warrant and this is 421A3. It talks about professional offices, et cetera. My understanding is that section and that section alone covers everything these people have proposed to do. That the add-on sections borrowed, taken whole from other NB, Hall's Corner, farther down toward Sweetser's, you can pick your others. A, I'm not sure why they need to be here at all to let the Island Creek people do what they want to do. And I really don't see why we have to do it in this way. It comes very, very close to making things unintelligible. I would suggest that maybe what it's time to do is go back to the drawing board, or at least to the writing board, and write this thing so it gives Island Creek what they need and doesn't leave open the potential for all of these things, none of which they say they need, none of which they say they want to do, and are doing nothing more than confusing the rest of the bylaw.
Okay. So here's where I think we are. We have an amendment that we need to dispose of before we move any further. The amendment, as I understand it, would be to strike from 421A4, items numbered 7 and 8, which deal with the much-talked-about food service establishments. And with the friendly amendment, move them to 4214, adding those two items, which are 7 and 8, and numbering them in a proper manner. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the amendment before us. I think what Mr. Lampert was talking about is... Your suggestion, Mr. Lampert?
What I think my suggestion probably comes down to would be to indefinitely postpone this article and let's go back to the drawing board and write it in a way that is comprehensible, gives people like Island Creek what they need, but doesn't open to possibilities that are not the type of things I think people expect to get in these two lots and that Island Creek, so far as I know, has no need for.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to deal with is the amendment. I think we've talked about the amendment now. We're going to remove the food establishments from NB light and make sure that they're included in NB1. After we deal with that, then we'll deal with what we'll do with the main motion itself. So all those in favor of making the changes to the article through the amendment that's been presented, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to the amendment and you want to just leave it the way it was originally presented, press 2 for no. Voting is now open. So the amendment actually passes 129 to 115. We're now back to the main motion that has been amended. And the proponent wishes to speak, so we'll let them speak.
Just like to address some of the concerns, you know, that have been raised. The, you know, the question to postpone, and that's something that, you know, we have to consider, but the question to postpone this, this is now the second time we've postponed it. The residences, which are not residences, that John Baer mentioned, we never said, John brought this up a number of times and I've gone back and actually looked at the minutes from planning board meetings and town meetings last year, or earlier this year. We never use the word residences. They are historic structures. They're former homes, but they are offices. They are not residences and therefore they're creating a problem. We're trying very hard to keep everyone happy and achieve what we want to achieve as a community on that whole property, but with particular focus on this Washington Street facade. To postpone the article at this point is a second postponement. You know, again, I said that's something that we have to consider, but I just want to make clear that we continue to kick this can down the road and it is becoming a bigger and bigger problem every time we do. And that's something that, you know, I want to avoid. I want to maintain the ability to achieve what we all, I think, want to achieve. The second thing that I'd just like to address quickly is that, you know, we are indeed a farm, very much so. We are not a, you know, marketing branding company. And, you know, that is the spirit in which we've approached this. We are not developers. We're not, you know, out here to try to flip properties and make money. But we are trying to create a viable property, financially viable property, a viable property for this community. You know, and I think that the uses that are still in here are uses which, you know, we felt were in keeping with the spirit of that neighborhood. The restaurant has been a point of contention tonight. There's a restaurant across the street. The property is completely surrounded. There's, on one of these parcels, there's one 100-foot lot line shared with a residential property. The rest of it is all commercial and public properties. There's a church. There's the Windsor House. There's Bayside on one side of the parcels and then nine and a half acres of NB1 that now exist, mostly because this NB light zoning did not exist last year. And if zoning is something that we're only going to touch, you know, the last time this zoning was largely overhauled was 1999, which is why, Jim, I think you very astutely said that those bylaws are screwed up. I'm not sure if that was the, what was it?
I said they were a mess.
A mess. The bylaws are a mess. In 03. So I think that, you know, that's counter to this concept that zoning is forever and that if we zone this property this way, 100 years from now, people will be, you know, opening video rental stores in a strip mall on Washington Street. Zoning is something that needs an overhaul. And as the NB1 provision that we put through last year at town meeting was a stopgap measure between now and when we can do a comprehensive review of the Snug Harbor business zoning, this too is a way to protect the historic aesthetic value of those homes, allow us to get some uses in there so they're actually being used. They're not continuing to be vacant offices while buying us some time to get to a larger comprehensive review. But the plotting pace of zoning is something that, at this point in the age of the zoning that we're dealing with, is causing big problems. And we feel that this NB light zoning is a pretty good way to deal with a lot of those problems, which is why we've left a lot of the uses that are in there inside the language. I just wanted to clarify some of those things.
All right. Sure, go ahead.
I'll be real quick, but I brought up the point at the last town meeting that these homes, especially the Bridge House that we're trying to find a resolve for, that house has a 10-inch seawater pipe that runs from Duxbury Bay through that entire house. It's not a house. It's not going to be a house. So we're trying to come up with some resolve to keep this property looking the way that it looks now, actually vastly improved by the renovations. I don't see a clear path, if this doesn't pass tonight, that we're going to have to sell this property as a residential development. The house, I don't, I certainly don't have the means to preserve that home or that structure. It's not a home. It doesn't have a kitchen. It doesn't have showers. It doesn't have, has a couple of small bathrooms. So we've collaborated with the boards. We've worked really hard. We've come back now a couple of times. And again, I don't think there's a perfect solution to the problem that's been created in this property, but I think this is about as good as we're going to get. And really appreciate the support. Thanks.
Mr. Bennett, I think you'll get your wish that you'll get a vote tonight because having started debate on this article and this being a citizen's petition, at this point in time, I won't entertain a motion for indefinite postponement. It will be voted up or down unless you, as the petitioner, are willing to withdraw it at this point in time. We have a couple of more comments. I see somebody in the upper right-hand corner.
Yeah. Chuck Wilbrenner, 264 Washington Street. Also, one of the owners of the Windsor House, which is in a butter directly across the street from this property. If you have gone into those buildings, these two that they're talking about, Skip's right. They are not houses. While they even, for the last decade, no one's lived in those houses. They've been offices. They've been vacant for at least 10 years. We have an opportunity right now to have someone go in there with a new zoning pact that makes it, you know, that we could live with and preserve the look of Washington Street. I think that's what everyone's talking about, whether it's a resident or not. You know, at the last meeting, we said it would be a residence, but who's going to buy that property as a residence? This is an opportunity for us right now to preserve Washington Street. We have a buyer. We have someone that knows what they're doing. I think we should move forward with this.
The gentleman who was standing behind you has been patiently waiting. She was waiting first. That's very kind. Please.
My name is Diane Grant. I live at 26 Meeting House Road. I used to work for the planning board. I respect the work they do and I support these businesses. I also support indefinite postponement of this article. There are a lot of changes being made. This is creating a brand-new zoning district. A new zoning district was last adopted by the town in 2004. So this is not an undertaking we should take lightly. we should take lightly, along with the other changes that people discussed. I also have a question about a particular paragraph. I don't know if you want me to go through it. You talk about more than three vehicles or less than three vehicles in Section 421A.3, but there's no mention of if there are three vehicles, what would happen? So I think that more time needs to be taken, and it would also allow time for the Island Creek oyster people, or whoever the property owners are, to get their local historic district in and make sure that those structures are preserved. That was the main point of the Planning Board at the first public hearing on the ICO rezoning, to preserve the streetscape, and that can be done through putting them as a local historic district. It would give them time to get that done before we adopt a new zoning district. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I skipped over you. Somebody's patiently waiting down on the ground floor on my right.
Eve Pinoyer, again, 59, Tussock Brook Road. I really hate to write bylaws on the floor, too. I agree with the last speaker and with Mr. Lambert, who spoke earlier, that we should postpone. I support the concept of NB Lite. I like it. But I don't think it's light enough, even with the amendment. I'm not sure that the abutter would necessarily meet their goal of not having night and weekend use by just eliminating restaurants. A lot of these other uses could be open in the evening and on weekends as well. And I think, and I think more study is needed and perhaps, you know, ability of public to comment on exactly how should an NB Lite be crafted? Should it contain requirements in regard to limited hours? That would, that those requirements would bind, be binding in the case of a special permit, and not left to the discretion of the ZBA. So just for those reasons, and the fact that this is unlike anything we already have in the bylaws, like I said, I support the concept of it, but I think if we're going to have an NB Lite, it needs to be lighter even than the amendment proposed by the abutter.
Sheila Lynch Benton, 344 West Street. I would just like to remind the audience of the prior proposals were full demolition of the residences, which are, even though they've been used as offices for almost 50 years by Batel, that the prior proposal for demolition was developed by a developer. And Skip just mentioned if it doesn't pass tonight, he might have to sell them. And John Baer mentioned houses go for $4 million on Washington Street, and if it's not developable by a developer, if they buy the two historic residences, we'll have another developer potentially with a historic demolition six-month delay, and who knows what's going to happen? And I think the proposal by Island Creek, they've been at it more than a year trying to make this work. And I would disagree, I appreciate Mr. Baer's 20 years on the Planning Board, but zoning is not forever. Zoning is done by people, and as we've seen, we've made changes over the years. And this is an earnest proposal to keep the historic street front, and if you don't pass this tonight, we potentially may see demolition permits in the future. So zoning, people who want to study it for another year, another two years, we're up against businesses that want to operate on Washington Street in a historic manner with a local business. I encourage everyone to vote for it.
Thank you. The gentleman's been down here on my left, has been patiently waiting. I think we're getting to the point, though, where some of the comments are repetitive. I'm wondering if there's something new to be added?
Mr. Moderator, I think we're about as fully informed as we are going to get this evening, and I think we owe it to Island Creek to get off the dime and give them an answer, so I'm going to move the question.
Well. Yeah, I guess that wasn't either for or against. I guess it was relatively neutral. So having said that, we're going to take a vote on moving the question. We did this a little while ago. This will end debate, and then we'll come back and vote on the main motion. Question, to move the question requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of voting, all those who've heard enough and are prepared to vote, vote for the question, vote to move the question, all those who would like to continue the debate and you want to vote against it. So the motion to move the question passes 227 to 17. So now before us is the amended article. The amended article was what was presented by Mr. Bennett, with the change that would move the restaurant out of NB Lite, but make sure that it stays in NB1. I think I've got that right? So all those in favor of it will press 1, all those opposed to it is 2. This is a zoning article, it will take a two-thirds vote to pass. The motion passes 182 to 64. I want to thank everybody for their patience and for so many people who hung in there. That completes the business and the warrant for special Town Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, Sanidad, and I'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.